One missing regular member, so Larry, you will be participating in voting. So we have also in front of us here now the minutes from the November 21st, 2019 Planning Board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether they're, they need amendment or they're acceptable as submitted? Mr. Peterson?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the previous meeting as written.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the minutes as written by Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Anybody who wasn't there, I guess, should abstain. Yeah, so I think Larry, you weren't listed on here probably, so you should...
Six and one.
Yeah.
Six all one.
Alright, so that motion passes. Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Board. If you turn to your packet, there are two communications. One pertaining to case number two from Mark Rapalga from the Fire Department on 35 Groton Road. And then you have your usual technical review meeting sheet to determine regional impact. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Alright, report of Chairman, Committee Liaison.
No meetings.
No meetings, okay.
We have some coming up, though.
Alright, good to go. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meetings and hearings for everybody in the audience here. So after each legal notice of a conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the Board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the Board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Following that, I'll then ask for any testimony from the audience. First, I'm gonna ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to a plan to come forward. If you so choose, go ahead and come forward to the microphone. Make sure you state your name and address for the record, and this is your time to express any current concerns or ask any questions you may have of the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The Board may then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. If so needed, I will allow one public member to respond only to those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks as a subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all of our applicable approval criteria established in our national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. At this time, I'd ask for your interest and your courteous attention. If you do have a cellphone, if you could please put it on vibrate or turn it off, I would also appreciate that. Okay, so old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, case number one, Bradford Hill Revocable Trust, Hudson K-9 Training Center applicant, application and acceptance of proposed dog training facility. This facility is located at 14F Broad Street. I'd ask this time, has anybody from the Board that's had a chance to review this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Alright, do you have somebody from the applicant here for case number one? Come on up. Reminder, state your name and address for the record, whoever's talking, and if you switch, kinda redo it. It's on audio, so...
My name is Ramon Miranda.
Hold on a moment. On the, isn't this one and five? The back page is five, so...
Let me take a look.
I would ask staff, I have five new business subdivisions. Oh, I know why. They use the back page, sorry.
Yeah, I don't think so. Yeah, okay. You're good to go. Alright.
My name is Ramon Miranda.
Make sure you, like, read, you can bend that mic up, or you can even take it out if that's easier. But it doesn't go too far away from your mouth, so...
My name is Ramon Miranda.
My name's Lori McGivern.
We're for Hudson K-9 Training Center.
Just give your address, too.
Dog training facility, 251 West Hollis Street in Nashua. Lori and I have been training together since 2000. We've owned our own business, we're going into our 13th year. The reason for the name, we started off in Hudson, where we were there for about 10 years. While we were there, we were in good standings with the city, you know, never had any issues. We ended up moving over to Nashua last year, about a year and a half ago now, where we're also in good standings with the city and good standing with the landlord. We're a dog training facility. We don't do any overnight boarding. There'll be no outside fences or anything like that, everything is done inside. We don't do doggy daycare. This is strictly about training. I apologize, I'd been at work since seven this morning, so I apologize that I didn't get a chance to run home and change, you know, before we came here. So we moved in to 251 West Hollis Street about a year and a half ago, and now we're looking to move into 14 Broad Street. The building is a standalone building, it's, everything would be indoors. We're not looking for anything outside whatsoever. Everything is our training. Everyone comes in, the classes run about 45 minutes long. People come in with their dogs, they do their training. We schedule on the hour, in case we need, you know, an extra 15 minutes or whatever with their clients. And then people go home. We're very good about asking clients to walk their dogs before they come to the school. We do offer poop bags and stuff, and if a dog usually, you know, goes to the bathroom outside, clients will grab a poop bag, take it, and for the most part, usually just take it home, dispose of it. Once again, everything is gonna be done in the building, and it's just training. We specialize in pet obedience. We do everything from, you know, just, just a regular Shih Tzu as a pet, all the way up to AKC, K-9 Good Citizen. We're both certified trainers and evaluators for the AKC. We also recently certified a bunch of our dogs as therapy dogs, so we've been doing therapy work. We actually just recently went up to Nashua High School. We've actually been asked to come back to Nashua High School and Merrimack High School to do some work with the intensive needs kids, to work with the kids with autism. So that's all part of what we do, too. But it's real basic, as far as we're just trainers. We're not looking to set up anything outside, do anything outside. It's all inside. Clients come, they get their class, and then they go home.
Well, when we first looked at the building, we thought this would be the perfect location for us to do this. It's kinda tucked in the back, it's not, you know, any, it's standalone, everything's inside. It's a nice big open space for us to kinda configure however we wanna do our classes. As soon as we did look at the building, right away, you know, we worked with these guys, and Linda's been awesome, I can't say enough, she's made me feel so comfortable, 'cause I'm not, you know, I'm a dog trainer, this isn't what I do. But everyone's been great, and we're just really hoping, you know, that we can start our business over here. We're gonna continue to do it the other place, too. We have a lot of people who are really interested in, you know, getting more training, that's why we've already outgrown our other space. Our current landlord also did give us a referral, too, so we're nice and clean, and you wouldn't even know there's a dog training school over there, so I think that's all that we wanted to say.
Everything that we do is controlled by numbers, so a couple, our niche has always been, since we've been training together, everything is low numbers, so that we can give a better quality service to our clients. So we, three, four dogs in a class, we don't do 15, 16 dogs in a class. We're not treat trainers. I want the dogs to respect the clients and trust their clients, therefore they become the high value praise, the high value reward. You know, and like I said, we always tell the people, you know, there's no such thing as too much affection, right? So that's kind of our niche, and that's, you know, in a nutshell, what we do.
Okay. Did you go through the hours? What was your expected hours?
So, so we offer a couple different, so we're Monday to Friday. I like my weekends with my kids. We don't work the weekends. We're Monday to Friday. Our training schedule, we have three training classes in the morning, 10, 11, and 12. We don't train at 1:00 or 2:00. I do have to pick up my youngest child from school, and that's, gives us time to answer emails, return phone calls, you know, grab lunch when we can. And then we start back up at 3:00 o'clock. So we have a class at 3:00, a class at 4:00, 5:00, 6:00, and our last class starts at 7:00 PM. And we're usually done around 8:00, clean up, sweep, throw out the trash, you know, windows, you know, that kinda stuff.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant from the Board? Mr. Peterson?
On a personal background, so do you have prior life experience with dogs? How did you get into this business?
So I actually, personally, I'll go first. I actually got into dog training by accident. When I was 19 years old, I used to do confirmation shows, kinda like what you see on TV, run around the ring. Someone actually stole my leash off my crate, and they were calling my number up to the ring, and this guy was nice enough to let me use his leash. He turned out to be a dog trainer from Acton, Maine. We started talking, kinda hit it off. So I used to drive an hour and a half to Apprentice to learn how to dog train. From there, I, we started, you know, just, you know, pet obedience, behavior modification. And then from there, I ended up, started training with a club in Massachusetts, and what we did was, you know, that on a little higher, higher scale, but also we started competing with dogs. So we do, like, for instance, my daughters right now are kinda following in our footsteps, and they're competing in rally obedience, which is, excuse me, companion obedience. So it's for people that don't wanna spend seven days a week in a dog training school training, people that just wanna go out and have fun with their dogs. It still requires, you know, a good amount of training, but my daughters are kinda following in that footstep, in our footsteps now, as far as they're actually out there competing with their own personal dogs. We've done everything from therapy dogs, we have actively, we have a client who is a student up in Utica, New York, and we train her dog. The dog's trained, we just keep maintaining it now when she comes home. That's a diab, epileptic alert dog. So when, before she has seizures, the dog lets her know she's gonna have the seizure, so she can get on her medication. And it's actually reduced the seizure rate from like 10 to 12 seizures a week down to two, because she's able to catch them in time.
So I've been involved with dogs my whole life. I raised my family with dogs, I was always interested in it. I decided, I had a dog that was a very nervous aggressive dog, I didn't know what to do with, so I sought help, and I ended up apprenticing for that person, then I ended up running classes, I ended up running the place, I was the head trainer and manager there. That's where we met, there, and then we decided we could do it better than it was going on there, so we set off on our own, and we've been going strong ever since.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant from the Board? Okay, none at this time, thanks.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you guys for your time, and thank you for helping us out, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
At this point, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, hearing none, I'd check with the Board, any further questions of the applicant or staff before we're in the hearing? None? Okay. Alright, at this point, I'll go ahead and close the hearing, then, move into the meeting. So it's pretty straightforward, conditional use permit, we've got the staff report in front of us, there are no actual stipulations or recommendations on it. Does anybody have any particular discussion points they wanna make or talk about?
I would just note that in addition to there being no one here testifying in concern, we do have a couple of letters of recommendation, including from their current landlord, saying that they're a great tenant, and that they would recommend them, so just note, that's that.
Okay. Anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
I'll make a motion to approve new business number one, conditional use permit, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan and arrow section 190-133-F, with no stipulations.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're moving on. New business subdivision plans, there are none. New business site plans, case number two. Etchstone Properties Inc., owner, application and acceptance of proposed 25-unit, single-family conservation development. This property is located at 35 Groton Road. Does anybody from the Board had a chance to review this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Alright, you're all set.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, for the record. My name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street, here in Nashua. Here tonight representing Etchstone Properties, on their property located at 35 Groton Road. We're here tonight seeking application acceptance and final approval for a 25-unit, single-family residential development, to be known as Terrell Farm, upon the property located off of Groton Road in southwest Nashua. I've got a brief presentation for you, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
So the subject property is located at 35 Groton Road, MAPD Lot 23. Of course, the Groton Road is also known as Route 111A. The section runs from Main Dunstable Road and the Greg Road intersection to our east, to the Hollis Town Line to our west, where it eventually connects with Route 111. As can be seen on the aerial photo map up on the board, the property is abutted by single-family residents to the north and to the west. City-owned conservation land, known as Southwest Park, to the north and to the east. To our south is Groton Road, along with some undeveloped land across from Groton Road. In this immediate area of the city, generally contains mostly single-family houses. The total area of the property is about 25.4 acres, and this land and the abutting parcels are all located within the R40 zone. The Terrell family has owned and resided upon this land for many years. In 2010, this subject parcel, which is Lot 23, was subdivided out of a larger 71-acre tract. The existing house, barn, and farm remained on the subject lot, Lot 23, while the remaining 46.5-acre parcel, which is now known as Lot 516, was conveyed to the city for conservation purposes and inclusion into the city-owned Southwest Park. As you can see from the aerial photo, the majority of the property is undeveloped and exists as a mix of wooded uplands and mowed hayfields. The existing house and barn are located in a central portion of the property, but have since been demolished, and access to the site is currently provided via long gravel driveway off of Groton Road. The topography of the site, of the site is slight to moderate. Overall, the grades generally slope towards the interior of the property. Test pits were performed throughout the property and generally revealed sandy soils. There are two wetland resource areas on the site that were identified by our project's wetland consultant. The first is a wetland complex and intermittent stream that is located in easterly portion of the site and runs in a northerly direction from Groton Road towards the city-owned conservation land to the north. Eventually, this stream and its watershed makes its way to Lyle Reed Brook and then the Nashua River. The stream channel is somewhat poorly defined as it meanders through that portion of the property. There's evidence of historical alterations to this stream, impoundments, culverts, which is typical for an agricultural land. The associated wetlands are a mix of wet meadow and wooded wetlands. The second wetland I wanna call your attention to is located on the westerly portion of the site, is a wooded wetland with no inlet or outlet, and all the wetland areas on-site have an associated 40-foot critical wetland buffer. Lastly, a vernal pool study was conducted this past spring and confirmed there are two vernal pool areas located on the site and are shown on the plan. The two vernal pools are entirely located within the delineated wetlands, one being in the westerly wetland, one being in the easterly. The existing house was serviced by a private septic system and well, along with overhead, electric, and telecommunications utilities. So in terms of the proposed development, the project team evaluated several options that were available to us for the development of this parcel, a parcel which is very attractive with over 1,300 feet of frontage along Groton Road. So we looked at conventional, a conventional R40 grid subdivision, we looked at the various applications of conservation subdivision, as well as an elderly 55-plus housing. And ultimately, we decided to proceed with the conservation subdivision form of development, as we felt like the goals and objectives that are outlined in that section fit perfectly with this site. That being a lot of design flexibility in terms of the units and the roadways, allowing for a cluster form of development, which results in less infrastructure, and most importantly, more open space protection. Therefore, what is being proposed is a 25-unit, single-family residential project to be developed in accordance with National Land Use Code Section 190-40, which is a conservation subdivision section. This type of project is allowed in the R40 zone. The project will be held under a condominium form of ownership, and will include private roads and utilities. As I mentioned, the project is to be named Terrell Farm. And a couple elements of the project, 25 single-family detached dwelling units, which is a provided density of one unit per acre. Each unit will contain three bedrooms and a two-car garage. Access to the project is being provided via two private roads, to be known as Craftsman Lane and Testament Circle. Additionally, a shared driveway is proposed in the northeast corner of the site, to be known as Vista Way. This driveway will provide access for the three units located in the northeast corner of the site, and includes a culvert crossing of the existing intermittent stream. I'd like to call your attention to a number of pedestrian improvements that will be constructed as part of this project. The first is a paved pedestrian connection along the site's easterly frontage with Groton Road, from our new private street, Craftsman Lane, all the way to the, the end of our property to the east. The second is a natural walking path connection that is being proposed in the northeast corner of the site, which will make a connection to the existing trails in Southwest Park. The third is a new mid-block crossing of Groton Road, which I will address later as part of my presentation and the sidewalk waiver letter. Additional site improvements include new curbing, guardrail landscaping, and site lighting. The units will be serviced by a private subsurface sewage disposal systems. Etchstone is working with Penachuck to extend a new public water main to the site. The nearest water main is located about 1,800 var site at the intersection of Groton Road and Hadley Drive. We've met numerous times with both Penachuck and the city's engineering department, including city engineer Ducren before he left, to talk about the specifics of this extension. And what we're proposing is, is to extend this water main to our site within the right-of-way, but mostly off pavement. Each unit will also be serviced by private propane tanks and underground electric and telecommunications facilities. The remaining land outside the roads, units, and driveway areas will remain as open space and will be maintained under the rules of the Condominium Association. As shown on the plan, the open space provided is 88% compared with a minimum required of 75. Additionally, as shown on the site plan, certain portions of the property will be designated as conservation land or conservation areas, as required by Section 190-40. That regulation requires that a minimum of 40% of the land be set aside as conservation space, and we are providing 50 in the three locations as shown on the plan. If you look on, on your screens, I'll try to highlight those. There's a section here on the easterly portion here, they're shown in yellow. Here's Section A, Section B in the back portion of the property in the rear, and then Section C be located in the westerly portion. We feel like this meets dead on with the intent of the regulation, which is to provide, you know, contiguous protected land. We've got a little bit of a unique situation on this site, being that a lot of the areas of conservation, or some of the areas within the buffers, exist as mowed, mowed hayfields today. And we followed some recommendations of both the project team and, and certain public agency review officials in terms of the ongoing upkeep and mowing of some of those mowed hayfields in order to, to maintain them, both for aesthetics and also to prevent any sort of invasive species from growing in, so. Regarding stormwater, our approach for this project is to take advantage of the sandy soils located throughout the property. We've got a large stormwater basin being proposed in the, this will handle runoff from the majority of the development, including the units, the lawns, the roadways. Those will be piped to that location using catch basins and a closed drainage system. The area will contain a riprap for bay for pre-treat infiltration, basin for treatment and recharge. Due to this, its location and the topography of the area is gonna be tucked away and hidden from the rest of the development. Additionally, a small portion of the site drains to the wetland located in the westerly part of the site. So what we've done in that area is we are proposing essentially a cutoff surface gravel trench that will intercept the little bit of water that drains in that direction to capture it and recharge it back into the ground. So both these practices have been sized to completely store and infiltrate up to the 100-year storm event again. That's really trying to take advantage of those sandy soils on site. The project's traffic consultant, Steve Purna, submitted a, an impacts study memo along with the TIR form. The project falls beneath all thresholds, requiring a larger study. I'll try to relate some of the numbers from the report for you. In the AM peak hour, the project creates 23 new trips, the PM peak, 27 new trips, and the total trips are 290 for the 24-hour period, which is about 12 per hour. Mr. Purna also evaluated site distance, looking both west and east from our proposed street. And per the study, ample stopping site distance exists in each direction for the 35 mile-per-hour posted speed limit, as well as design speeds of 40 and 45 miles per hour. We have over 500 feet in each direction, which meets all those criteria. I'd like to call your attention to the two architectural renderings I have on the Board. With regard to the units themselves, we've provided these elevations for the two unit styles that Etchstone is considering for this development. You can see that they're both lower-profile ranch units that average about 2,100 square feet. They got pitched roof and a traditional New England-style architecture, and each unit will have a basement. So Etchstone has, has used both of these units at some of their other projects, and... So, Etstone has used both of these units at some of their other projects and have found that they've been very well-received in the market, which is why we're considering using them here. And if successful tonight, our clients' hope is to begin construction this upcoming spring. Mr. Chair, we did have one waiver that we were requesting regarding sidewalks, and if it's okay with you, I'd just like to read a portion of that waiver letter into the record, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions. Tonight, we're seeking a waiver from Section 190-212. This regulation requires sidewalks to be built on at least one side of an existing or proposed street. We're asking to waive the construction of sidewalks along the new private streets, that being Craftsman Lane and Testament Circle, and also along the westerly portion of the property's frontage on Groton Road. The plan includes the construction of two private streets, as I mentioned, and one private shared driveway that will service the proposed development. There is an existing sidewalk located directly adjacent to the site along the north side of Groton Road. There are no existing sidewalks along the site's frontage, nor on the opposite or the south side of the site's frontage on Groton Road, or to the west within 250 feet. The site is located in the southwest part of Nashua, where there are numerous trails, sidewalks, and bike trails, including the adjacent city-owned conservation land, which is a combination of the Terrell Homestead Conservation Land, which I discussed, Udicky Farm, and Southwest Park. Also, it is important to note that the property located directly across the street from the site, 40 Groton Road, was the subject of a 2008 residential subdivision approval in which public sidewalk and associated easements were proposed to be constructed along the entire south side of Groton Road, together with a connection to the existing sidewalk in the vicinity of Hadley Drive to the west. So, over the last few months, myself and the project team have worked closely with various city officials, including planning department staff, engineering department staff, and the Conservation Commission regarding our overall sidewalk approach for the project. And based on that feedback, we focused our efforts into improving pedestrian connectivity along the easterly side of the site as follows. A pedestrian connection along the site's frontage from Craftsman Lane to the existing sidewalk that directly abuts our site to the east. This is going to be with a combination of sidewalks and a widened paved shoulder. The second is a pedestrian connection from the rear of the site to the existing Southwest Park trails via a natural path. And the third being the proposed mid-block crossing at Groton Road, which will include a crosswalk, two rectangular rapid flashing beacons, pavement striping, signage, and associated improvements. I'd also like to call your attention to the exhibit plan that was included in the waiver letter packet, and that may help you follow along in my discussion. So, we're asking for this waiver to build sidewalks within the project and along the westerly portion of the site. In lieu of constructing sidewalks along the property's westerly frontage and/or making a monetary sidewalk contribution, we're proposing this mid-block crossing at Groton Road to allow for future connectivity, both to the Nashua Rail Trail to our west, and also to the large conservation land track located just over the state line in Dunstable. I'm sorry, lost my spot. As shown on the plan, the two rectangular rapid flashing beacons, pavement striping, signage, and associated improvements will be constructed in that location. Is it important to note that the cost of constructing these improvements is greater than the potential sidewalk contribution based on the remaining westerly frontage, which is about 650 linear feet at the city sidewalk contribution fee of 50 feet per foot? And I'd be happy to speak more and get into the weeds on the costs associated with this if it is the desire of the board. So, in summary, the reasons for this waiver request is that our client, Etstone Properties, has a wealth of experience constructing similar type of residential projects and has learned over the years that residents can walk safely within the private streets because there is little traffic, and the width of the proposed private street, 28 feet, allows for ample room for walkers while also minimizing the amount of potential impervious surfaces. Constructing the additional sidewalk along the westerly portion of the property's frontage has little public benefit, since there are no sidewalk connections available along this portion of Groton Road to our west. Conversely, constructing the proposed mid-block crossing at Groton Road and other improvements in lieu of constructing additional sidewalk is beneficial to not only the residents of Terrell Farm, but to the walking public, as these resources would be put to use in improving connectivity where pedestrian resources exist today. Again, as I mentioned, the property across the street, 40 Groton Road, was the subject of a previous approval in which public sidewalk was already proposed on the south side of Groton Road along our frontage and would make a connection to the existing sidewalk in the vicinity of Hadley Drive. It's our understanding this property is currently being evaluated by a potential developer and that any future residential project on this property would be required to provide pedestrian connectivity in a similar fashion as that 2008-approved plan. So, in summary, Mr. Chair, we feel that the proposed Terrell Farm project is a responsible way to develop this land and conforms with the applicable zoning and site plan regulations. Furthermore, we feel the project meets the goals and objectives of the conservation subdivision regulations with regard to density, open space, and design flexibility. The conditions and stipulations from staff seem reasonable and are agreeable to our client. And so, at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Just so I'm clear on the sidewalk stuff, so the decision for the location of the current mid-block crossing, that's coordinated with the previously-approved plan across the street?
It gets closer to it.
Is there a reason why you have it this far down? I'm just kind of...
So, the existing, if you've been out there, it may have been tough to see with all the nice snow we have on the ground now, but there's an existing, if you look at the aerial map, right at our easterly corner, you can see the yellow line.
Walk up there if you want, and just bring the mic, it might be helpful to point that out for us a little bit.
Sure. Is it working?
It should be, yeah.
Okay. So, the city has an existing eight-foot-wide sidewalk that runs along here, that runs all the way to the east to Udicky Farm.
On the north side.
On the north side of the street. Yep, yep, it's tucked back. There's a couple road frontage lots here, but the conservation land comes down in this direction. And then, from this location here, there's just kind of a stub, a sidewalk, that goes towards Groton Road with no signage or really direction. It's just kind of pointing in that way, suggesting that a future connection would be made in meeting with staff and in looking at the master plan and kind of the idea of connectivity here. The goal is to try to get both to the rail trail and also, as I understand it, a secondary goal is to make our way to the Dunstable Mass conservation land.
To the south.
To the south, in this location here. So, and then also in this location, there's a short section of a paved trail that runs back into Southwest Park, and then more trails that run back through. So, what we thought was, we're limited somewhat with this wetland as we get too close, so we couldn't push this further down. But what we were able to do is push this crossing back and get it lined up so it at least could be across from that parking. The 2008 approval had essentially a trailhead located in this section of the site, at which time folks could either go south towards the Dunstable Mass land or across towards the rail trail. But I think that what we're doing here is providing a vital step. I think we're making this connection much safer. The existing crossing is a little bit farther around the corner, so we're providing slightly better sightlines for that crossing, along with all the improvements we're making, the rapid flashing beacons, the advanced signage. We spoke specifically with the engineering department about, you know, how to handle this widened shoulder in that location. We're trying to balance not impacting this wetland with, you know, providing a safe location there, safe connection.
And then, to the west, where does the sidewalk, does it end at Hadley right now?
At Hadley. It extends a little bit further on Hadley, but not very far. So, again, this 2008 subdivision plan contemplated making that connection fully in that location along with easement. So, the first plan we submitted to staff did include a westerly sidewalk, and really, it was driven by our conversations with the Conservation Commission, I think, between Mr. Slattery and myself. We met with them almost five times, I think, and went through that. They're very interested in the trails, and we were before them for the driveway crossing, but we spoke more about global sidewalk approach. So, after we kind of formulated that plan with them, we did meet with both planning and engineering staff to talk it through before we came back before you.
Okay. Mr. Weber?
Well, he's there. On-site, you're not using any sidewalk on-site for the trail, is that correct? On your roadway, on Craftsman or Vista?
We have no internal sidewalks. That's part of the waiver request.
Those are, what width?
28 feet wide, so...
Four more than standard, right? Okay.
Are you contemplating on-site parking on the street for overflow? If somebody has a party, they're going to have people parking on the street?
At my understanding, 28 feet is allowed. I believe if we went to 24 feet, the fire department would require no parking signs. That's been my experience. So, that was part of the reason, the fire department and speaking for them, they much prefer a 28-foot-wide roadway, which then they allow on-street parking, so.
Would it be possible on Craftsman and Vista to have some sort of direction so that people that aren't really familiar that much with the trail, that they could know that they could get to the other part of the trail?
This one back here?
Yes.
Sure. I mean, we could provide some wayfinding signs.
It's, I'm not so much as a sign, as maybe a painted area, so that they can know that this is where the trail actually goes, maybe direction. I'm not saying you have to, I'm just saying that's, might be beneficial to people who are walking through, trying to find their way to this other trail and connection. And the, what kind of a surface are you going to be using from Vista to the connection? What kind of a surface are you going to be providing for that trail?
So, we were asked, we were asked to, as part of our alteration of terrain permit, one of the agencies we coordinate with is New Hampshire Fishing Game. So, they had asked us to consider making that path a natural path, so it would really just be a grass path.
Okay, no, I mean, that's what they're asking you for, and the other alternative may not be what is best suited for the land. Around the circles that you have, Vista connecting with Craftsman, in the center area, because that could be needed for the fire trucks to go around, minimum, would you have no parking in that area, on that, just that circle area?
We've not been asked to do that. We ran turning templates, and we feel like the fire truck can safely get around.
With parked cars? That's what I'm talking about. If you have parked cars on that, in that circle...
I don't want to say one way or the other. We can check on that, yeah.
And if it isn't, then no parking or fire lane needs to be in there, no parking, fire lane kind of thing?
Sure. We can check with the fire department on that.
Yeah.
No problem.
That's all. Did you find any underground water tables in your tests?
Yes, we hit seasonal high-water table in certain locations.
Would that be cause for water in basements?
It would not, no. And if it did, they would have to have some sort of under-drainage or pump system, but most of the basements will be outside of that. We have to kind of further confirm in some, there's a couple lower areas of the site where the road hasn't climbed up yet, so.
There is ways to make basements without subpumps that are completely dry.
Right.
In today's construction, you know that.
Yep.
You'd know that.
Yes.
You'd know that. Thank you.
What's the, how far away is this gas, the natural gas?
It's pretty far away, yep.
Doesn't make it up there at all? And all the utilities are underground?
Correct, yep.
Mr. Peterson?
So, each home will have its own propane tank?
Mr. Varley?
I know you talked a little bit about, for example, in the instance of the sidewalk, trying to avoid impacting the wetlands. Are you going to be working within the buffer at all, so it's going to be a wetland permit, or are you outside the buffer in all cases?
We are impacting wetlands in this location here for the driveway crossing. We also have buffer impact there. And then, we went, once we worked out this approach here, which is some buffer impact, the roadway is in the buffer, so that a portion of this improvement would be, you know, work within the existing buffer. We went back to the Conservation Commission, and they were fully supportive of that.
But do you need a state-level DES permit?
We filed a state permit, we have not received that yet.
Is it all slope, granite, curb, all the way through?
Yes.
Including the inside of the circle? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If 40 Groton Road never comes to fruition, do you, in effect, have a mid-block crosswalk to nowhere? Like, is there any substantive connectivity as we sit here today?
Well, I think folks use Groton Road as it exists today. There's somewhat of a wider paved shoulder, as well as, you know, a gravel shoulder. I know it's used by both pedestrians and bikers now.
I'm sure it is, and your point notwithstanding, you're proposing a new mid-block crossing, where, in essence, I would say you're almost encouraging pedestrian or bicycle use across an arterial highway. It's posted at 35, prevailing speeds may or may not be 35. You've probably got a daily traffic between 4,000 and 5,000. I guess I'm asking, is this ADA compliant, or are there other provisions? I mean, can you physically construct a crosswalk to nowhere? And I would argue the fact that it may or may not have been done in other parts of the city doesn't make it right and doesn't mean we should do it again.
Yeah.
So, are you, I know you can't speak for another landowner, but that's a concern. The other question I would have is, is this considered a traffic control device? By that, I mean, was there any warrant criteria? I know you talked about site distance at your driveway location, but my presumption would be if you have pedestrians and bicyclists on 111A, there should be some verification of at least stopping site distance criteria at the mid-block crossing, not just at the driveway. Clearly, it looks like you're offset a couple hundred feet, maybe.
Yeah.
And would the city be responsible for maintenance? Would this effectively become a city-owned device when and if it's constructed?
It would, it would, yes. And we'd be happy to, we did not evaluate the site distance at that crossing, and we'd be happy to do so. In terms of the landing area, you're right, we're kind of providing this connection with no guarantee that the connection will be extended from there. You know, we feel like we've provided a safe area to get folks across, but you're right in that it's kind of missing that next link. I mean, the city does have a crossing there as of today, so we feel like we're improving that as best we can at this point.
Is it actually marked right now? I know the sidewalk kind of does that right angle.
The sidewalk, there's no striping in the street.
That's what I'm talking about. So, people may not know, but by providing the crosswalk, you're drawing attention to it inherently, assuming... you're drawing attention to it inherently, assuming it is safe.
Yep.
But without the landing area. Um, the other thing, this is more common than anything else, are RFBs, that, that treatment, the pedestrian actually, that's still kind of in its infancy. Um, there, there was a recent federal highway interim approval just last year.
Yeah.
And I think New Hampshire was granted sort of blanket approval at the state level. But, um, New Hampshire DOT is still, one of the requirements is that they be notified of new installations.
Mm-huh.
And, and further, even though this is a compact section.
Mm-huh.
Under RSA two thirty-six five, the state technically does have the right to review as to method, size, type of installation.
Okay.
Given that this is a newer device, you're providing no landing platform, I do have some legitimate safety concerns. Uh, I appreciate your effort and the applicant's effort to try to provide the connectivity. My concern is just generally speaking, without a commitment from forty Groton Road, and I know you can't provide that, it kinda looks like a sidewalk to nowhere is what's being provided. And until such time that there is that connection, I'd almost like to hold that idea in your back pocket and maybe if such time is there is sidewalk on the south side of Groton Road, that's perhaps the time to construct this when there is a, a safe.
Sure, sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Is there, I think though there is trails on that south side, right?
Um, not formally.
But there, there are people that use them. I mean, I feel like I see vehicles down there.
People do use, appear to use that property, yes.
So there is some?
Yeah, there are. I mean, there's a, there's a sort of a, an official parking area.
Right, yeah, it's like actual parking.
And there's that, you can see there's that on the plan, there's that, on the aerial view, there's that dirt road.
Right, right. That's a little up the.
Yeah, my understanding, that's been used for many years, but it's nothing, there's nothing formal there, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, we did, we did, I, I can't speak to the details of the design. We'd be happy to, you know, provide some, some additional information regarding site distance. We did review this design, um, like I said, with the city engineer and his staff. Um, they didn't, they didn't, uh, voice, voice, uh, any, any big concerns with it. Um, and they did sign off on the, on the revised plans. Um, and the city does have, uh, this, uh, a similar type crossing just up the road from here.
Right.
Uh, up by, uh, up by the pond. Um, so, and I think the only other location that the, a newer one that just went up was by our office off of Northeastern Boulevard, which is different road and not in the, the urban compact as was referenced.
In terms of the.
Mr. Varley?
Yep.
The waiver request, I know you've, you've noted that the, the cost of constructing mid-block sidewalk and associated improvements would be more than what the contribution would be. I mean, are, for purposes of the waiver, are you effectively saying our contribution is the cost to construct this? And, and was that, I, I know you said you had those discussions with the Conservation Committee. Was that, was engineering department and the planning department, were they sort of on board with that proposal as well, that this would be instead of making the contribution?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for them, but that's how we presented it was.
That's, that's what you're.
Instead of providing this westerly sidewalk to nowhere, um, you know, in, in this, in this payment, you know, I think that's better used on projects where there's no connectivity. And, uh, there's a lot of connectivity here, so that's why we got focused on, on this easterly side. And, um, I do know the Conservation Commission very much supported this. Um, and, uh, engineering staff and planning, I believe, supported as well.
Mr. Weber?
On the, back to the trail, I had another question on, on Vista Way. Uh, if it's just grass, how are they gonna descend, uh, be able to realize that that, there's a trail there when there's grass, grass, grass there? So how will you show a trail going, uh, to your, off your property where it's gonna connect?
So there's an existing cart road here that came across. There's an old culvert there. So that's kinda well-defined a little bit, but we're, now that we're not using a, a stone dust or a rat product to define it, we will have to likely have some signage and.
So they can.
Wayfinding signs so they could, they could find, yeah.
And once you start using it, is that, that grass will go away and it'll be dirt or gravel?
Correct.
Will you, would gravel, uh, gravel be better for that?
They didn't want any sort of gravel or any sort of material.
Mr. Varley?
Yeah, sorry, just going back to the sidewalks for a moment. Um, the, the extension of the sidewalk on the south side of Groton Road that, that goes past Hadley, do you know about how far that is from the, the western edge of property here?
Uh, it's probably about a thousand feet.
Okay, it's that far, alright.
Mr. Weber?
Yeah, one last one. Uh, I was actually at, um, and, um, um, there is, I looked at, had the chance to see forty and how they're gonna actually be coming, I guess they're gonna come before the, come to the board at some time in the near future and ask questions. That company is gonna come here and ask about it, so I just thought I'd throw that out to here.
Ms. Harper?
Uh, just one quick question. Are, are you doing any landscaping around the propane tanks? I didn't see anything on the plan.
Those are all gonna be subsurface tanks.
Other questions from the board? Could we get it right now?
Thank you.
At this point, I would, um, I guess before I have any audience, ask for any audience testimony, are there any staff questions? Maybe just staff, if you could weigh in on your discussions of regarding the crosswalk that you've had, that'd be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, over the last, um, few months, we've had, um, many discussions with the applicant regarding this. Um, we've met with them. Um, they've also met with the engineering department about this approach. They've gone to Conservation Commission several times and staff supports what they're proposing to do. Um, it'll have a greater public benefit with the connectivity to the trails than if they were to just propose a sidewalk along their side. Um, we also have tonight, um, as a discussion item, forty Groton Road, which is right across the street. So, but this really offers the most connectivity, um, to all the trails, which is really what we're looking for.
Okay, thanks. At this point, I'd ask, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Seeing, seeing none, I'd ask anybody wishing to come up and speak in favor of the plan. Any further questions of the applicant or, um, staff from the board while we're in the hearing? Okay. Hearing none, go ahead and close the hearing.
Um, just one thing, I wanted to, um, remind you that in your packet this evening, we did get a letter from the fire marshal.
Yep.
And one of the things that they're requesting is that Vista Way, um, is twenty feet wide and that there would be no parking signs.
Okay.
Um, on that part of the road.
Alright.
We could ask about that.
Okay, got it. Um, and that is this email from December fifth, right?
Correct.
Okay. I think there was a stipulation regarding the, um, recommended one, number four, that, that would, I guess we could reference December fifth on that.
Correct.
Alright, any other questions during the hearing? No? Alright, at this point, I'll close the hearing, move into the meeting, so. Uh, okay, so we've got, um, so the twenty-five unit development here, um, you know, it's a conservation, um, subdivision, some of these, several of them actually recently, particularly in some of these, um, areas of the city. Um, personally, I'm kind of in favor of some of these. I like the idea of, you know, less sort of pavement and impact, you know. Um, seems like a good layout to me, attractive use of the land. Um, you know, my thought on the crosswalk, I, I think, you know, it's definitely a, kind of on paper to nowhere, but having familiarity with the area, there's definitely a lot of activity on that south side of Groton Road. Quite a bit. So I, I think in, in, in reality, it probably will get used more than we, more than we think, um, by just looking at paper. Um, but, uh, definitely, I, I think, uh, Mr. Ballinger's inputs on the design and stuff, we probably could, you know, you might have, Mr. Ballinger, you might have some recommendations on stipulations of having it looked at or reviewed more by staff if you have concerns about the design, but.
I think at, at a minimum, and I, I appreciate the input from the applicant's engineer. It's important to distinguish and separate site distance criteria at the site driveway versus site distance criteria for pedestrians two hundred feet offset to the east. So I think that must be addressed prior to, uh, and again, you can probably see, uh, some of the horizontal nature of the road there. Um, I don't in any way question the fact that they've got appropriate site distance at their site driveway.
Right.
Um, you know, given the obstruction in the road, um, at the crosswalk is gonna be of the human element, it, it's probably, uh, critical to evaluate that separately.
Yeah, we could ask for that, I think, yeah.
And, uh, I, I, I do appreciate your comments as well with respect to what actually happens on the south side of Groton Road. And my only concern, uh, I think formally is that you're, if you're sort of starting from scratch here, you have the opportunity to propose something new. And if you've got an opportunity to do it new, you've got the opportunity to do it a hundred percent correct. And I'm not proposing at all that this applicant has the responsibility to construct crosswalk along the southerly, uh, side of Groton Road. However, we, there's no guarantee or surety that any other applicant will as well. Um, so that's sort of the, the conundrum. I think this is a pivotal piece.
Right.
Of the overall scheme. Um, I would, my preference would be to see sidewalk established on the south side before this went. And that, that to me, just seem would be the, the logical step. Um, but, um, again, that's, that's just my opinion on the matter.
Yeah, the practicality of that might be confusing 'cause they can't really hold the, hold the construction in escrow, if you will, until somebody, uh, I don't know. I'll welcome anybody else's. Mr. Weber, yeah?
Yes, um, going on the, the, the crosswalk, um, blinker system, uh, over by Rivier College.
Yeah.
We had, uh, actually a worse condition sightline-wise with that crosswalk. And what they did is down just about a hundred feet, I believe just a hundred feet, they had a sign with lights that would come on. I'm not positive, but I think they had signage that people coming would see a blinking light before they came to the actual crosswalk that there's gonna be somebody crossing.
Yeah, there's definitely ways to engineer when you have a site distance, but it seems like there's some flexibility even in the location of the, you know, I don't know. It seems like it to me they could work with.
Engineering.
Work with engineering to make sure it's got reasonable.
Yeah, that's what they did.
You can kinda see them further down the road on the aerial there. There's, there is definitely some, some room. But, Mr. Varley?
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would just note, and I think the, the applicant's engineer mentioned this too, there's, there is a similar crosswalk, a little, I guess it's, it's technically still named Nutswood, uh, where it's right before Fred Road, where the, where Lovola Pond is. There's that parking lot and there's a crosswalk that goes, because there's the trails, a similar situation with the trails in Dicky. And I, I'm not sure how exactly, it's been there, I think for a couple of years at this point.
Here's the guy.
So, I mean, I, I think, you know, and certainly, I, Mr. Ballinger, I, I appreciate your points about safety concerns and, and I'm by no means an expert in terms of this, but I think that's been relatively successful. Um, and it is sort of a similar situation, so I, at least we do have some, some precedent in terms of, I think of, you know, how that's worked. Um, and I, and I don't know if there's, you know, any intention necessarily to, to construct sidewalk at some point on the, on the other side where, where that crosswalk is. But I do, like I said, at least we have, we, we do have some precedent on, you know, the, the same roadway, very similar circumstance. Um, so hopefully that's some indication of, of what we can expect here.
And I appreciate those points, Mr. Varley. Um, I, I guess just going forward, and again, this is just discussion.
Sure.
Right now.
Yep.
If these are going to keep propping up throughout the city, should there be a standard? If not a city standard, a state standard that is adhered to, a national standard? Just, and again, just because a mistake was made once, perhaps, and again, I'm not saying a mistake was made, but do you, do you replicate the error? Do two wrongs perpetuate into perpetual right? And, and that, and it's, and I know that, I, I do, I appreciate the grander issue involved with, with the connectivity. Um, but, you know, I don't, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, so to speak, but, uh, I, I think, I think city engineering staff, and again, we've already heard of the one further to the west, Rivier College, Northeastern Boulevard, if these are gonna be sort of the new popular pedestrian crossing device, I would think that for its own surety, the city would want to comply to some sort of standard with regard to landing platforms and.
Right.
ADA requirements and site distance requirements. And is there a certain traffic volume threshold where these are more applicable or less applicable? That's all I'm saying, and this may not be the case to decide that. I'm putting that out there. Um, and those are sort of my, my general thoughts on the matter.
Got it. Okay. Mr. Peterson?
One thing, uh, I'm still not clear on, and I'm hoping that other board members could maybe help me with, like, on the circle, the, um, testament circle, if that's twenty-eight feet and cars are parked there, will a fire truck be able to go around that circle? Do we get an answer on that?
It's thirty.
Thirty?
They're in the circles, they're thirty. I checked with staff.
And I think the applicant said that they were going to speak further with the fire department about that and confirm that there was, that the fire department agreed there was sufficient raise. And then, Mr. Weber, your suggestion was that if they didn't, you know, that there was any issue, that they would.
Right.
Install, you know, no parking.
Um, when I looked on the bigger print with engineer, I actually went to the engineering department, and they said that the circles are thirty feet roadway.
Yeah, I mean, in my experience, the fire department looks at these pretty closely and they have commented, you know, so.
So that won't slip through the cracks?
It, yeah, I mean, it's been, definitely been looked at, 'cause they actually made comment on other parts of it, you know, so.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Mr. Varley?
I just have one very minor comment that I, this is just a suggestion in terms of, well, I guess I'd make two suggestions in terms of the stipulations. Um, one for, for stipulation number two, whoever the, the maker of the motion is, I just think we should reference the fact that it's, that there are condominium documents here. That's the applicant indicated this would be a condominium form of ownership, so I think we should just, you know, refer to that in that stipulation. And then, Mr. Ballinger, to your point about obviously not, you know, addressing sort of the larger issue that you're describing regarding some sort of national, state, city standard, but I'm thinking maybe we could at a minimum, um, provide a stipulation that the applicant would separately evaluate, the site distance, uh, standards at the crossing itself, um, and that, you know, they would review those with the engineering department and the engineering department would ensure that they were, that they were satisfactory, so.
Uh, I, I would concur with that, Mr. Varley, yes.
Other discussion, questions, items? Anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
I'm writing, you're talking.
I will make a motion to approve new business number two, site plan. Um, and that is with the finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, section one ninety dash one forty-six D, excuse me. Um, and that will include a total of eleven stipulations. And the first stipulation is a waiver request, requesting a waiver from section one ninety- And the first stipulation is a waiver request, requesting a waiver from Section 190-212 with respect to the location of sidewalks, and specifically here in, on the westerly portion of the property. And that waiver read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two has written, but with the following addition, that the, that the stipulation will indicate the applicant shall provide documents establishing a condominium. Stipulation three is written in the staff report. Stipulation number four edited to reference the email from our repaglia, repaglia dated December 5th. Stipulation six through 10 is written in the staff report. And then an additional stipulation number 11 indicating that the applicant will additionally evaluate the sight distance criteria at the proposed mid-block pedestrian crossing, and we'll discuss the same with the city engineering department for the city engineering department's consideration and approval.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve what the stipulations is indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion?
I, and I, I apologize because I, I neglected to, to add this into the discussion before, but I did just want to mention in connection with the waiver of the sidewalk requirement, because we spend so much time talking about this waiver. You know, ordinarily, we would expect a contribution to be made in lieu, that we would, we would either require the applicant to build the sidewalk, or if the request and the waiver that we would ask, we would expect the contribution to be made consistent with the ordinance. I think here we have somewhat unique circumstance where, as I understand it, the applicant, you know, is effectively, well, the way I'm viewing is that the applicant is effectively making a contribution in the form of the additional pedestrian improvements that they're constructing that they're not otherwise required to construct. So in my view, that justifies the waiver because they are essentially making a contribution in kind. But I just wanted to provide that explanation justification, as I, I know this, you know, as I said, this comes up often, so.
Yeah, I'd probably add that I think that, you know, just for the record, that, that equivalency or, or improvement above the contribution is, our, our understanding, it's been reviewed by the Conservation Commission in planning, and that's accurate, so. So I'd add that to the mix. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
One, so we have, that motion passes, and so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, six and one, you got that, Ed?
Yes, six and one. But before we go to the next one, was it five that you had? The change in date?
Yeah.
Was it five or four?
No.
Which one was it?
Four.
Four, okay.
Email.
And that was 12?
December 5th.
December 5th. And you, I hope she got all that information, because I can't write that fast.
Yeah, we can clear it up from the audio if necessary. Okay, moving on, we have new business case number three. It's a site plan. It's from Weston Associates owner, application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR 1103 to demolish existing structures on site and create two new retail plaza buildings. This property is located at 546 Amherst Street. Does anybody from the board had a chance to review this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for jurisdiction?
Some hoped.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passed. All right. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Rice with TIF Moran. I'm here tonight with David McKay from Weston Associates and Brian Redonance from Coastal Architects. We're here tonight on behalf of Weston Associates, Inc., who's the owner of the property located at 546 Amherst Street. The property is known as Tax Map H, Lot 178. It's approximately 3.16 acres in size. I put up a copy of the existing conditions plan over here on the right-hand side of the plan and down here for the audience for right now. The existing site is primarily located in the general business zoning district. There is a small portion of the lot, the zoning line is right about here, so the area south of this line is in the Park Industrial District. As pointed out in the staff report, the site's had a number of uses over the years, ranging from farming, a golf driving range, and vegetable stand, motorcycle dealership, and then most recently a school. It's the former Southern New Hampshire University Building, if you're familiar with the property. The property right now currently has two existing curb cuts right here and right here. Both are a right-in, right-out. There is a median along Amherst Street in this location, so all traffic has to come into the site making a right and go right out of the site. If anybody wants to head west, they have to make a U-turn somewhere down the road, and that's the existing condition. There's also, the existing access drive also connects to the property to the south, which is an existing office building, and that access will remain as part of what we're proposing. So we are proposing to demolish the existing building and construct two new buildings on the property as shown with associated access parking and site improvements. The building closest to Amherst Street is a one-story 16,100 square foot retail building with six proposed units. The units range in size from approximately 2,400 to 2,800 square feet, square feet each. The second building located to the, to the south is a little over 5,000 square feet. It's a one-story 5,040 square foot building with two proposed retail tenants inside of that. The project meets all zoning and dimensional requirements, lot area, frontage, depth, and it meets all required yard setbacks, front side and rear setbacks. Also, the required open space for the property is 10%. This plan has approximately 43%. Per the parking regulations, the minimum required parking to be provided is 71 spaces and the maximum is 141, and this plan shows 100 proposed parking spaces for the property. Curbing is proposed throughout the site. The anticipated hours of operation right now are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That might fluctuate depending on the nature of whatever tenants that they do get into the building. The site is, will continue to be serviced by municipal sewer and water. It also has gas and electrical service, and all those utilities will remain for these proposed buildings. We've also supplied new lighting and landscape plans as part of the application. The easternmost driveway here is going to remain basically as is, we're actually narrowing it up a little bit where it meets Amherst Road, but that entrance will stay as a right-in and a right-out. The other existing curb cut, which is here, we are proposing to close and redo the access to connect to the existing signalized intersection here at Blackstone Drive. This was the result of a, a lot of meetings with staff. I thank them for their time, as well as NHDOT to try to work out the details to make that doable. As I noted, all the traffic now that wants to head, head west has to go down here and make a U-turn somewhere. And so everybody felt that this was a, a much better situation, it makes everything safer, makes the traffic flow better, and works well for the property. We have coordinated this effort to date with NHDOT and city traffic staff. We kind of came to an agreement just before the holiday on how we were going to approach the, the signal design. So we are pending tonight's hearing. We anticipate to start the off-site survey and off-site design plans, which would then be reviewed by the city traffic department. So should we receive any conditional approval this evening, there should be a condition of approval that the final off-site plans need to be reviewed and approved by city traffic staff. Also, as part of that work, we did have to go before the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustment because part of this work is within the existing buffer area off of Round Pond. We did receive a favorable recommendation from the Conservation Commission and received the special exception from the ZBA. There's a net reduction of impervious surface in the buffer area. So right now, there's approximately 2,000 square feet of impervious surface in the buffer as part of our proposed plan. That will reduce down to roughly 800 square feet. So there's a net reduction of impervious area within the buffer of about 1,163 square feet. From a, from the drainage perspective, most of the property sheets from the east to the west, heading towards Round Pond, there's a small amount of area here which goes to the closed drainage system in Amherst Street. There's a small section here that existing discharges to the southerly of butter, and there's a small little strip just off the edge of pavement that goes to the easterly of butter. We have analyzed the two 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storm events as required either by the City of Nashville or NHDES, as this project will require an alteration of terrain permit. We have proposed a closed drainage system, catch basins and pipes, which would collect runoff and direct it to one of two underground storm tech systems on site, which would provide the pre-treatment and required treatment, as well as the required groundwater recharge that the state requires. We've shown that we've either matched or reduced the peak rate or runoff to all the discharge locations for all the storm events. And we actually just received our alteration of terrain review comments today. They were, they were very minor, there were five comments, so we feel like the drainage design is in pretty good shape and is close to being approved by the state. And we've also addressed all the, the comments received from city engineering. From the traffic perspective, we did supply a traffic impact access study. The conclusion of the report was basically that the, the proposed project will have minimal, minimal effect on Amherst Street corridor. The traffic increment will be less than two trips per minute during the PM and Saturday peak hours. The AM peak is negligible, less than one trip. And keep in mind, this is on a roadway network that handles about three, that can handle over 3,000 cars an hour. It also shows that the intersections remain below capacity and operate at level of service A and B. And the delays and queues have a minimal change between the build or no build scenario in the opening in future years. The delay impacts from this development show that it increases only a few seconds for the delay, and the queue impact is less than three cars at any of the approach, at any of the approaches in and out of the site. The main conclusion at the end was that the project traffic can be safely accommodated by the existing traffic network with no significant negative impacts or need for mitigation. We do have a couple of waiver requests as part of this application. The first one is Section 190-209A, which deals with maximum curb cut widths. The requirement is a maximum of 36 feet. We feel like we meet the, this requirement, and I've reviewed it with Scott as well. We're not sure exactly where that measurement is taken. If it's taken at the property line, both of our driveways meet, both of our proposed drives are 24 feet wide, but they do widen out where you're flaring the radiuses to match into the existing pavement area. So at the property line in this location, we're at 30 feet and 36 here, and then into the, when you factor in the radius curves, we're at about 39 feet here and 63 feet, I believe, here. This, and this one over here is really to help accommodate emergency vehicles and truck traffic if needed at that location. The second waiver request has to deal with a loading space, which is Section 190-199, which basically states that retail buildings between 5,000 and 20,000 square feet need to have a loading space. We have provided the loading space for this building. This building is only 40 square feet over the minimum 5,000. And where there's two small retail tenants proposed, we feel that they can accommodate the loading either in one of their parking spaces with a small box truck or load-off hours as needed. The third waiver request is another one that we weren't sure if we needed or not, and after further discussion with Scott, we feel we, we may not have to ask for this waiver, but it basically states that a redevelopment of a previously developed site must meet the stormwater management standards to the maximum extent possible, which we have. It goes on to state that the goal is to reduce impervious area by a minimum of 20% or meet the open space requirements in that zoning district. We have not reduced the open space, reduced the impervious area on the site. It basically is almost the same as what currently exists today, but we do far exceed the open space requirement. Again, the requirement is 10%, and we're just over 42 and a half. I think we're at 42.6. So given where it says or instead of and, with some discussions with Scott today, we felt like this waiver request is no longer needed, but I can let staff weigh in on that afterwards if you feel it's appropriate not to include that. The fourth waiver request has to deal with information on the existing conditions plan. It states that the existing conditions plan needs to show adjacent buildings and properties. We had discussed this with staff. Some of that information is shown on other seats, sheets within the plan set, but you can kind of see based on this existing conditions plan with all the notes and everything else going on the plan, we really didn't have any more space to, to show any of that information. But we are bordered, obviously, by Round Pond to the west, and we've got a commercial development to the north, the south, and the east. And they're pretty far separated from our property. And we don't have any impacts of any work that we're doing that would impact anything on the adjacent properties. And the fifth waiver request has to deal with light levels, Section 190-89, which states that light levels should not exceed 0.2-foot candles at any property line. There is one point location right here where it's at .3 at the property line, and then about two feet over the property line, it drops to .2. We feel this is insignificant, given that the eastern use is also a commercial use, and their edge of parking is about 25 feet from the property line, and this is heavily buffered with existing trees. So I don't think you're going to notice any difference in that area. The architect, Brian, will come up in a moment just to go through the couple landscaping waivers that are associated with the landscape plans that I've shown here. I apologize that the colors didn't print as well, I think, on this plan or the 11 by 17s, but that the orangish-red color is more of a darker red, it just didn't show up correctly on, on the printing here. It might show up better on. Show a little bit more clear in terms of what the actual color is. It is close to that, it's just more of a darker shade of red. We have read through the proposed conditions, and we, we agree with all them. As I noted, should we receive conditional approval, we should add in the condition that the off-site improvement plans need to be reviewed and approved by staff as, before the plan can be signed. I would like to thank staff for all their help in getting us to this point tonight. There's been a lot of meetings between us, Linda, Scott, Roger, thank you very much, and congratulations. It's been a pleasure working with you over the years. I'd also like to thank Wayne Husband and Joe Mandola. They've all made themselves available for the numerous meetings to, to vet the plan to get to where we are tonight. So I'd just like to say thank you to them. I'll turn it over to Brian for a, a quick discussion on the architecture, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Brian Redonance, Coastal Architects. I'm here to discuss three waivers on the, for the buildings. First waiver being from your code 190-172B facades. That's, that would be numbers one and two. The regulations state facades exceeding 150 feet in length measured horizontally shall incorporate wall plan projections or recesses having a depth of at least 3% of the length of the facade and extending at least 20% of the length of the, of the facade. On our rear facade, which, which would be the facade facing, facade facing Amherst Street right here, that's what we chose, what we chose to do is to turn our buildings in and create kind of a courtyard effect in there. It helps, it helps with safety and, and parking and, you know, kind of the effect that we're creating a, a nicer environment for, for the buildings. But we're not forgetting that facade. And what the regulations state is that, is that we should, we should be addressing that. And we have addressed that, even though it is basically the back of the building, we don't have a back to these, to this building at all. So what we've done is, we've, we have, it's 230 feet long. A 3% projection would be six, six foot 10 inches in and out along that edge. And the, and that would extend for 46 feet in length in order to meet the code. Our waiver request is that, is that we feel that the, that the facade is interesting enough. Our waiver request is that, is that we feel that the facade is interesting enough because it has 22% of the elevation in glazing, 13% in flat siding, and 65% in horizontal siding. In addition, there will be signage provided at each unit. And if you look at the, if you look at the facade, the colors are not great right here, but, but each, what we've done is create an architecturally pleasing facade on that street. There's no parking there, pedestrians can't really get there. So, but we want to identify that something's going on there and reflect what the real facade is on the other side. So, so we have the glazing, we have two types of siding, and we have, we'll have signage up there. And we feel like that, that's meeting the intent of the code because it provides architectural interest with this, with those materials and the glazing and the signage, and it creates visual interest with the overall design. And I think that you'll see that our tenants for those buildings will put their own, they'll have their own branding, their own signage, their own colors, and that'll be a, you know, an eye-catching thing for people driving by, and they'll be able to identify that, hey, that building's, you know, we'll go in here and we'll get to the, to the real entrance. That building A, the long one, when you look at the front facade, we feel this meets the intention of the code without any further modification or without any waiver required on that. We have awnings, we have glazing, we have signage, we have a portico, we have in-and-out projections on those facades, and I feel like that meets the intent of the code. So our smaller building, which is this one right here, that facade, the rear, that facade faces Round Pond, and it doesn't face any public streets. I think it, I don't think the code really applies to that facade. The front elevation, which is that one, the two units right there, again, same, we feel it meets the, meets the, meets the intent of the code as well with, for the same reason the six-unit building did. So I think it answers a lot of, a lot of those questions in the, in the, in the building code, in the planning. Going to code 190-172C roofing, we've, we've used, we've got parapits up there, and we intend to, when we get our HVAC equipment up there, we will finalize the other, the parapits that, that you don't see on that side of the building. Wherever that HVAC equipment lands in design, we will parapit around that. So, and we will do a presentation to the, to the, to the town, city on that. We are looking for a slight waiver on the height. It's, the parapits in the codes shall not exceed 15%. Our parapits as they stand right now are 18%, so we're asking for a 3% waiver on that in height, which is a very small amount. I think it's approximately less than a foot, but it makes a difference on the front. It balances, when you look at the front where the signage is and the architectural balance and the aesthetics on it, it's strong enough to ask for that waiver just because I think it, proportionally, it looks good. So the next one, code 170-172D, materials and colors. We, predominant exterior materials shall not include the following. The one that impacts us is prefabricated steel panels. We're asking for a request for the following reasons. The articulated fat, flat panel works well with the storefront glazing and signage to offer an eye-catching focal point for each store. You'll notice they're all, they're, they share some elements, but they're all a little bit, well, there's three different designs in there, and they're mirrored over, but there's enough architectural interest, I think, in those three to really start creating a focal point for each store. And the, the six-inch-wide lap-style panel breaks down the scale of the building with the familiar and historical look of lap siding, although it's, it looks, appears the same way it wears and, wears a lot better, and there's a whole lot less maintenance than lap siding, but it has that familiar, comfortable feeling to it. And also, the lap siding complies with D.2.0F, which states other materials of similar appearance and durability as determined by the planning board. So that's really up to you folks to, I think, give your opinion on that, give us some guidance. And steel panels are commonly used in retail buildings and provide low maintenance and attractive finish appropriate for this type of use. Moving to number four, mechanical appurtenances. We intend to comply with that code. I just mentioned that, that once we do have the mechanical equipment sized and placed, ready for the roof, we will shield it from, from any view on each, on each unit. I will put it to questions.
Any questions for the applicant from the board? Mr. Peterson?
In the staff report, under the stipulations, number 13, says the applicant shall create a public and emergency cross-access easement from this property over to Capital Street. I didn't see that in the plans. Is that in there somewhere?
I could probably clarify that. That's an existing item, and it's just required, so that's just a standard comment just to maintain that. If you look at the bottom of the plan, you see there's a pathway to the adjacent office building that would be on the south side.
Hmm, I don't see it, but I trust you that it's there.
Yeah, if you lift that up a bit, it would...
If you point out it with the pointer, I'll know where to look.
Right.
Does it say to Capital? I mean, I know that that drive, that access drive does move around.
Make sure you grab the mic. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, just, just hold it with you. Thanks.
Let me just check the wording of that condition, because does it say to Capital Street? I believe that this drive kind of curves around like this and then hooks up with Capital Street roughly here.
10 Capital.
Okay, so I think that they're just asking if I'm incorrect. Let me know just to form, just to keep that open and as it currently exists, which is what we're proposing to do.
So at the bottom of the picture on the right, that's where the access road would be?
It's where it currently is and will be.
Yeah, it's just going to continue.
Clarifying that.
Other questions for the applicant? Ms. Harper?
I just have two questions. So on the street side, are you, will you, will you be able to see the back of the parapet wall from the front side of the plaza? Is that what I'm seeing? And what kind of material will that be?
Yes, that white or the...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the back end. So if you're driving, you will be able to see part of that.
And will that be EPIS, or what material is that?
We see that as being probably just a white metal panel.
Oh, okay. And then my other question is, is there only the one entrance exit to each space, or will there be like a door on the, a fire door on the other side?
No, there's just one entrance.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
One more question. Somewhere in the reading I read that there's a duck crossing that goes across Amherst Street over to Round Pond, and how would all this activity during the construction affect the ducks that walk across Amherst Street? Did it ever come up in your discussions with the DES or anybody else?
Not with DES, and we didn't receive anything from Fish and Game or Historical Resources. It was a comment, I believe, that was raised by the city review engineer, and in discussion with staff, we'll try to minimize any impact that there is, but basically there's, if you look at the existing conditions plan, there's an existing building and pavement there now. There might be a slight interruption while the construction's taking place, but essentially they can do what they've been doing once our construction is complete, and they have access to continue from that point to wherever they're going now, which I believe goes across the street, which might have been a comment from one of the other applications that we had at one point in time.
Not long ago, we had a previous applicant run in the other side of Amherst Street, and the topic of those ducks came up, and here we are again, same ducks, same location.
You're talking to the same applicant, too, so. I remember that discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the colored rendering, it looks like on the proposed site driveway approach opposite Blackstone, there's some sort of crosshatching there. Can you explain what that is?
That is, I should have taken frozen that on this plan. I apologize. That is really just reflecting a stabilized construction entrance, so before the pavement's there, when there is vehicular traffic entering and exiting through there, you're required to have a, basically a gravel, a certain length and width of a gravel entrance drive so that basically you're not tracking mud and dirt onto the city street. It'll kind of get washed off in that area and then cleaned as needed.
That's not finished. You're not proposing a stamp imprint on the asphalt?
No, that's all just going to be regular pavement. Yes, yeah, that was, it's a feature that shows up on our site preparation plan because it's really part of that detail, but it was actually just a layer that was accidentally on this plan, so I apologize for that, but it will be just flush pavement.
Thank you for the clarification. Speaking of that, that approach, that's a, quite an oblique angle. Can you tell me what you've done to verify that turning movements can be accommodated there, including large trucks and delivery vehicles?
Yep.
With, with vehicles in queue?
Yes.
Not just running auto turn with...
Yep, and we have looked at that and had those discussions. Trucks are basically not going to be able to use this access. We've had that discussion with Wayne Husband, the city traffic engineer. We are, as part of our off-site plans, we're going to have to propose signage that really makes all the trucks go to this location, at least the larger trucks. We will be showing vehicular movements that show that basically a regular box-sized vehicle can make movement with no problem coming in and out of that location, but larger-sized vehicles. There will be signage approximately here, here, and on the median island here that say no trucks, and that will all be as part of the off-site review that Wayne does in the end, but we had those preliminary discussions with him, and we've generally come up with a signage package of what we're going to propose and how that would work.
And I, I think there was a comment from Joe Mandola regarding, inquiring as to whether or not you had consulted New Hampshire DOT with regard to their 101A widening plans?
Yes, we have, yep, and we've shown the future widening on our plan. It really doesn't widen much on our side, it's more on the other side, but it, it basically stays where it is and then kind of just bends in a little bit at this corner, but we know that the building and the, the city sidewalk would not come into conflict with our proposed building once those improvements take place. There's no definitive timeline as, as I'm aware of. I believe it's roughly slated for 2025-ish, but we have taken a look at that and adjusted the plan as needed.
Mr. Chair, one more question, if I may?
Sure, go ahead.
With regard to potential off-site improvements on Amherst Street, it looks like you have a proposed mast arm on the north side of Amherst Street, which makes sense. With regard to accommodating westbound lefts from Amherst Street into your site, there's an existing mast arm there. I think it's a fairly short one. You, you're going to need, you're going to need an extra...
That's all part of the off-site design plans and the review and approval of that, so we'll have to make it comply with all the state standards and city standards.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate all your landscaping around the, the parking area and everything. Usually we get people coming in and saying, no, I don't want to put any landscaping trees or anything, but it helps with the heat on that, so I appreciate it. On your west side that buff, that borders the Round Pond?
Yes.
On the edge of the paving, are you putting a berm or anything on there to stop any, if a vehicle had a ruptured oil tank, that it would not leak into the...
It's all current, the whole, the whole, the pavement there is correct.
Okay, I didn't see it. I didn't, I just wanted to...
Every, every piece of external and internal pavement on the plan is gut curbing.
Okay, thank you very much.
With the exception of the tip downs for the ADA access.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, none at this time. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? While I have the hearing open, any further questions from the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, thank you. I just thought of one additional one. It looks like for your trip generation, you ran general shopping center, retail type of thing. Would that include, are you limited to dry goods with that use? I didn't see any drive-throughs but, on the site plan, but...
Yeah, there are no proposed drive-throughs, and it is intended to be all retail dry goods at this point in time. If that changed, if it didn't fall within the parameters of what the city considers retail, we would have to come back for a change of use.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Mr. Barley?
I have a quick question for staff. We talked about one of the wave requests specifically for the stormwater management, and, and reading, you know, the applicant's letter and hearing discussion, it does look like perhaps with the open, meeting the open space that they wouldn't need the waiver. Do you have a view on that? Do we need the waiver? Should we get rid of it? Should we keep it?
I think you might want to keep that particular one only because the, the previous building was taken down, and it's, it's almost looking at like a whole new site. If they were keeping existing buildings or doing something, but this is a whole new site right up, so I, I think it would be, because they are, they've done a good job with, with adding new stormwater devices and things, but they, that, that's the reason I put it, I kept it in there, just the new, new reg, stormwater regulations and just being...
All right. Any further questions for staff or the applicant from the board? Mr. Weber?
One for staff. Just sign on my paper, I only have one through three, and then I have on the bottom, it just has the vote, so I don't have mine four through 16.
Someone probably didn't copy that for you.
Okay, I just wanted to let staff know.
Does anybody else?
You got it.
I got it, don't worry about it.
You're missing a whole sheet.
I got it.
Anything else? All right, thanks. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and move into the public meeting. All right, so, so we basically have a new site plan for a couple new buildings. There's been quite a few uses in that, that area in the last kind of decade or so. Seems to me like a pretty good concept. They didn't, they did indicate that they were going to put screening of mechanical equipment. I think that's pretty key here because you're looking at the back of the thing, so it's not, we may want to add that stipulation. I don't, the applicant was pretty clear they were going to do it, and so I don't think it's a big deal, but the waiver that, the way it's written, could almost let that off the hook if we leave it there, so. So I guess if anybody's doing that, I would recommend that if we...
You're talking about the waiver that's stipulation number six?
Number six. I think we'd want to be specific that we don't, that we are requiring screening of rooftop equipment from the Amherst Street view. I mean, that's the, I think that's the key.
Actually, of all, on, I would do all the buildings because...
Yeah.
On the other side, not just Amherst's side, but the Amherst, on the smaller building, goes for the people across...
The pond.
The pond would see that, so it's not just Amherst.
Your, your point is really just be, be clear that to the extent we're waiving certain conditions, we're not waiving that condition. That is a condition.
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah. Yeah, and I think the applicant said they were, that's what they were planning to do, so I don't know if it's a big deal, but, but other than that, I think it seems like a pretty well-laid out arrangement. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions or discussion items. Anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business number three site plan with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, Section 190-146D, with a total of 16 stipulations. The first six of those stipulations, all being waiver requests, stipulations one through five, reading that the waiver is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number six, also being waiver request, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, however, also adding that, that this waiver does not include a waiver of, of the requirement to provide screening of rooftop equipment, which will remain in effect. And then stipulations seven through 16 is written in the staff report.
All right, so we have that motion to approve.
I think it was suggested to add final traffic plans will be required to be reviewed by the city traffic department, as suggested by the engineer. That would be fine to add to.
Traffic plans? Are you talking the offsite improvement?
Offsite, right.
It's in 16 though, right? Oh, no, it just says all included. Yeah, so we could, we'd have to add it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's onsite and this would be offsite.
Yeah. Mr. Varley, if you want to?
Sure, so I'll just?
We haven't seconded any?
Haven't seconded yet, so I'll just add a stipulation number 17 to my motion, which would be, is that prior certificate of occupancy as well?
Sure.
Prior issuance of the certificate of occupancy, offsite improvements shall be completed to satisfaction of the city engineering department.
Is it improvements completed or is it the design be?
COs. Do you think building permit would be better? Or CO is fine?
I think it should be reviewed by traffic before they install it.
Yeah, okay.
So prior to building permit?
Prior to building permit.
Okay.
You want to strike that? Okay.
Yeah, so I'll strike the original stipulation 17 and reword it as prior to the issuance of the building permit. So offsite traffic improvements will first, will be reviewed and approved by the city traffic engineer?
Got it. Okay. So we have that motion to approve by Mr. Varley with the 17 stipulations as indicated. Do you have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thanks. Okay, so moving on with the agenda. New business, case number four, site plan. SACAM LLC owners US Cellular care of KJK Wireless applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed site plan to install a temporary tower, temporary fencing, and a truck containing radio equipment with associated site upgrades. His property is located at L Silver Drive. Do we, I have a motion as to whether or not this application is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Some of?
So a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. All right, so.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gashlin. I'm with United States Cellular applicant. And the background to our application is US Cellular currently operates on an existing tower that's located in the Costco parking lot in South Nashua. And we've run into a little problem where that tower is going to be dismantled sometime between mid-December to January. What's happened is we lease space on this tower. Tower's owned by Crown Castle and Crown Castle has lost its rights to operate there. And again, that site's going to be dismantled, so we're in a position where we've got to find an alternative site. We haven't really figured out what we're going to do for our long-term situation here. But we are going to apply, and we are applying now for a temporary site at L Silver Drive, which is approximately 2,500, 2,800 feet north of the Costco site. And one important thing about this site, this is one of US Cellular's most important sites. It's one of US Cellular's most used sites. And you could probably picture that by where it's located. You know, it's right across from the mall, it's got all that commercial usage down there. It's got Route 3, Daniel Webster Highway. So it's a very important site for us and we're scrambling to get a temporary site up while we're trying to figure out a permanent solution. And the best place to start our explanation of what we're looking at is on page C3A of the plans, which is actually, I believe it's the sixth page of your entire set there. And our proposal is on a, is actually in a parking lot. Our parking lot here is, the existing parking lot is something in the neighborhood of 80 feet wide by 140 feet long. And we have leased a 50 by 50-foot space within that. You'll see that within our 50 by 50-foot leased space, we're proposing a fenced area and we're going to fence in our equipment, which is shown here. We've only got a couple of pieces of equipment. The most important thing, of course, is the temporary tower. We're looking at installing a 130-foot tall tower. That's going to be installed on a ballast mount is what we're calling this. What that is exactly, it's a 20-foot diameter. Probably the best way to explain that is it's very similar to an above-ground pool, except this is made of steel. And we simply, you know, filled this with sand and that's why we call it a ballast mount. In addition to our tower and our antennas, we're looking to park a truck alongside our tower and that truck is going to house our electronics and our radio equipment. And the only other component to our temporary site, of course, we need power there. And you'll see on this site plan that there's a current above-ground utility pole right there. And that's why we picked this spot, so we can park our equipment right next to that existing utility pole. We're proposing to do a power drop from that pole right to our equipment. And a couple other important things about this page. Number one, we're not proposing to do any type of cuts on this property. This is, the vast majority of this lot is an asphalt parking lot, as you'll see. All of our equipment is going to sit right directly on top of the asphalt. No cuts whatsoever, including the fence, which is going to sit on top of that. Another important thing about this page right here is you'll see that off to the sides, we've drawn in where the existing vegetation is. Now, I'll come back to that later on in the hearing because one of the waivers that we're going to ask for is for a landscaping plan. And I wanted to point out, we do point out landscaping in a couple of different places in this plan. And one thing that I neglected to mention, which I should have in my introduction, is we were required as part of our permitting process to go to the ZBA for approval before we came here. And we did do that a couple of weeks ago and we got approved by the ZBA for this. And one of the items that was approved by the ZBA was for landscaping. They approved us to use the existing landscape and vegetation for a buffering. So. So going through our site plan, the second page of our site plan, page C1, is an aerial photograph of, we're calling this the existing conditions. You'll see that we've indicated where all the property lines are here, all the abutting neighbors. Here's our lot. An important thing about this page is you'll note that there, it does show where all the existing vegetation and landscaping and buffering is here. Page C1A, similar, only a close-up. And again, that highlights the existing foliage and vegetation. I've noted the property lines. Moving on to the next page, page C2. Once more, I want to point out that we do a pretty good job showing what the existing conditions are here with all the abutting buildings, property lines, et cetera. Next page, page C3 is a pretty important page. We show in much more detail what the existing conditions are. Not only our site, but 100 feet around the property lines of our site. You'll also notice that we've done the topography here. An important thing I want to point out here is also later on, we're going to talk, one of our waivers is we're going to ask for a waiver to provide a stormwater plan. And there's also, we're going to ask for a waiver to, or for the stormwater maintenance or operations plan, two different waivers. And an important thing to point out on this plan, because this is the topo page, our topo lines are drawn in at two feet per line, I believe. And if you look closely at where our equipment is set up, you'll see that it's completely flat there. There's no difference in elevation at all. And again, as I had mentioned, all our equipment is sitting directly on top of an asphalt parking lot with no cuts or anything. The only other important thing I would point out to the site plan is I noticed in the staff reports that there was an item where Scott had mentioned something about the parking. And I just wanted to point out that we did do some math for the parking there. And what our situation here is, is this is overflow parking for two different businesses, Honey Baked Ham and Louis Louis Restaurant. And you'll see that in our math over here, we've found that 81 spaces are required for these two businesses. But even though we do take up a couple of spaces for our equipment, we still have 85 spaces available for those 81 required spaces. Now, I'd like to spend a minute or two just going down through pretty quickly the staff report and just, I've got a couple of comments and maybe a question or two about those. But first of all, I'd like to discuss, we've got six different waiver requests, as I mentioned. Number one, the ordinance 190-279 landscaping plan requires a landscaping plan. As I mentioned, the ZBA has approved us to use the existing landscaping as a buffer. And in addition to that, as I pointed out in our site plan, there were three different pages where we did a pretty good job depicting what the landscaping is there. If we were required to do any more of a landscaping plan, I don't think it's really relevant because as I mentioned, we're not proposing any landscaping. We've been approved to use the existing landscaping. And we believe that that's not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. We also have two waiver requests. And I'll talk about these in conjunction because they're pretty much the same items. Ordinance Section 190-279 CC requires a stormwater management plan. Also, 190-279 Section KK requires a stormwater operations and maintenance plan. Now, as pointed out when I was going through the site plan, we're not creating any additional impervious surface. All our equipment is sitting right on top of the asphalt. There's no, it's a completely flat surface. We're just not creating, you know, any additional stormwater. And one of the main items that I should have been stressing along as I'm talking about these waivers is, as mentioned, this is a temporary site. Now, in terms of temporary, the ZBA has approved us to operate at this site for 18 months, I believe. So again, this is only a temporary situation. The next waiver, the fourth waiver. Ordinance Section 190-279 OO requires a traffic impact analysis. Now, we, we're not anticipating any significant traffic whatsoever here after our initial installation. What we typically see on these sites is maybe one maintenance truck visit per month on average. And what you would typically see, the US Cellular maintenance trucks, they typically have Ford F-150 pickup truck with the US Cellular logo on the side. And again, the thrust of my point is, you know, it's going to be a very minimal traffic impact, so we don't really see the need to do a traffic impact analysis. We also request a waiver for utilities. The ordinance requires underground utilities. And as I've shown on the site plan, our equipment is going to be situated right next to an existing overhead utility pole. We simply are going to do a power drop, as I mentioned there. And we are so close to that existing utility pole that it's really not practical for us to do any underground utilities. And again, since this is a temporary site, if we were forced to trench out, you know, a couple of feet of the asphalt for utilities and then once we left, there would be, you know, we have to patch that and that would be, you know, basically a mess there. And again, considering the temporary nature of this and how close we are to the existing overhead utilities, we believe that this is within the spirit of the ordinance. The final waiver that we're requesting. The ordinance requires us to depict an existing, or the existing conditions of not only our site, but all the adjoining properties. And before I start talking about that, I wanted to point out, there is some, there is a term in here that specifically states "as appropriate." And so I'd like you to keep that in the back of your mind while I'm talking about this. Now, you recall that when I went through the site plan, we've got two overhead aerial pages showing the existing conditions. We've got the topo, the topod existing conditions site plan. We, I'm sorry. The topod existing condition page, that not only showed our site, but it showed the adjoining properties within 100 feet. We believe that's appropriate. Yeah, and that's our request for waiver list. The final piece of my presentation, there's maybe five, six, or seven different conditions that I'd like to discuss, or I've got a couple of questions about those. But before I move on, would you like to ask any questions about the waivers? Or would you, you'd rather save those until after I'm finished?
Yeah, why don't you just go through your presentation and then we'll?
Okay.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay. On page two of the staff notes, number seven. On page two of the staff notes, number seven. Joe Mandola, the city engineer, had some questions, and we responded to those questions. In an attempt to streamline this, my question is, I'm thinking that this may be not applicable because we've responded to those questions. And one important thing about the engineers' questions were, it didn't appear that any of those questions were really applicable to section 190-279, which is, you know, as you know, that's the requirement of what has to go in the site plan. So I guess a more succinct way to say that is, I don't think that Joe's questions, you know, as we answered them, would impact the approval of our site plan in its current Also, number eight. See, there's a notation about an item or two prior to recording. It's our understanding that the registry of deeds don't accept site plans for recording.
You talking number eight?
Why is that relevant?
Number eight, yep.
Yeah, those are just the, that's just the way the plans have to be submitted for final, I mean, it doesn't.
For the city.
For the city.
Not for the registry.
Yeah, that's just for us, yeah.
Okay.
This isn't something we just made up. This is a standard procedure and a standard process that we follow.
Yeah, so you'll have to submit those at some point, you know, along the way.
Yep, fair enough. Number 13, that's not applicable. If any work is proposed in the road, a financial guarantee will be required. And as mentioned, we don't have, you know, any road work or anything down there, so that's not applicable. And the final item, I suppose this is a question for number 14, prior to building permit, minor drafting corrections shall be made to the plan. I don't know if this is just a standard request, but it's my sense that our plans in their current form is everything that you can approve in its existing form. So, that's my presentation, and unless my colleagues, Ken or Steve, would like to add something?
Make sure you say your name and address.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yep, for the record, my name is Kenneth Cazara. I am the principal of KJK Wireless. We represent US Cellular throughout the states of New Hampshire, Maine, and Vermont. And I'm a resident of the city of Nashua. And I just want to stress how important this temporary facility is to us and our customers with losing a site in the busiest retail area probably in New Hampshire. It's going to affect thousands of people. So we really got a late start on this because our landlord, Crown Castle, didn't tell us till October that this was all going to go away. So we're in a scramble to get this taken care of before they tell us we've got to get off that tower. So I'm just saying, it's extremely important for us, and we appreciate any help you can give us to get this done and operational as soon as possible. Attorney Steve Grill is also with us, and he wanted to just give you a couple of small pieces of information, and then we'll answer any questions you have.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Steve Grill from Moltenboro, New Hampshire. And I, like Ken, I've represented USL in New Hampshire and elsewhere in New England for a long time. I just, you know, I don't really want to get into a long thing about the law, but I just wanted to state for the record, I'm sure the board is familiar with this, but facilities like this enjoy special protection under federal statute known as Telecommunications Act of 1996. And the most important fact under that statute and the case laws that's been developed over the past 20 years or so is that without this site, US Cellular would have a significant gap in coverage, as Ken has already described it and as Bob mentioned as well. So hopefully, we don't have to spend a lot of time on the law, but I just wanted to state that for the record to put it in context. Thank you.
So I just had a couple quick questions. Yeah, maybe, I don't know whoever's the right one, it's pretty simple. The fencing, can you just explain the fencing concept?
Yeah, it's just a simple construction fence. It'll be, the fence will be mounted on concrete blocks placed on top of the asphalt.
Yeah, is it slatted, or is it?
It's not currently supposed to be slatted. I mean, I guess in, if the board requested it, we certainly could.
Okay, if we desire that, it'd be amenable to it?
Yes, sir.
And there was a comment in the engineers', our city engineers' document regarding, is there an opportunity to push it, looking at the page here, up the page to get more parking?
Unfortunately, we're required to provide documentation to the Federal Aviation Administration about the locations like this. And once we do, they, we only have the ability to move them approximately three feet in any direction. So the FAA has already provided their approval here. And as you can imagine, getting approval from the federal government is not an easy thing. So if we had to adjust the location more than three feet, we would never be able to get it built in time to meet our deadline as to when the other site's coming down.
Okay, was there a reason it was a little further down?
To get to that utility pole as easily as possible.
All right, thanks.
Remember, we didn't want to do any disturbance outside of the asphalt area.
Yeah, okay, all right, that makes sense. Other questions for the applicant? Mr. Peterson?
Yep. The city engineer, question number four, was, is there a snow removal plan for this site? Does the owner of that parking lot?
The owner of the parking lot will continue the snow removal as they have in the past. And like we said, it's unmanned, so we won't have any vehicles in there once the construction's done, maybe once a month.
Ms. Harper?
I just have to ask, are there any health concerns regarding having a piece of equipment like this so close to apartments?
No, the FCC is in charge of the health aspects of our facilities, and they have ruled that there are, once we meet our certain thresholds, there's no impact to the public whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wallinger? Just really quickly back to snow removal, is it imperative that snow is removed from inside the fence area, or?
No, typically, since, you know, it's unmanned, we would not remove the snow at all.
Okay, even if you had to get a service vehicle in?
Well, you know, we would park in the parking lot, and they have shovels if they need to.
I'm just saying, that would be incumbent upon you, though. It wouldn't be incumbent, the property owner is external to the fence, and you are internal to the fence. I'm just trying to draw the distinction.
Right, yeah, we would have no plan to remove the snow. We traipse through it or shovel it out if we have to.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Weber?
Did you provide the engineering department with any tests showing the, that the way that this is being built with the sand on top of it, that it would withstand hurricane force winds?
They're not required to, the actual design criteria, and we can provide the engineering department with a structural analysis that we performed, that requires us to have this up to a 94 mile per hour wind in this area, and also up to one inch of radial ice at 50 miles per hour. So it's built substantially to withstand just about anything, nothing that we've seen in Nashua since I've been a resident, that's for sure. So.
The other one is, you're saying that there won't be any degradation to the asphalt that's being, the weight being pressed on it, but weight that heavy could depress?
Well, what we've told the landlord is that once we leave, if we've done any damage to it, we'll fix it.
Okay, it's going to be bonded kind of a thing?
Yeah, well, we have a lease agreement with them that requires us to.
That's what I meant.
To leave it as we found it.
Yep, great.
Other questions of the applicant from the board? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern, or questions with the plan, come on up. And just a reminder, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Jeff Brown. I'm vice president and general counsel to Princeton Properties. We are the owner of the Pheasant Run apartment complex, which is adjacent to this property, officially owned by PRA Properties Limited Partnership. Our address is 1115 Westford Street in Lowell, that's our corporate office. And we have several apartment communities throughout New England, including this one off of Silver Drive, so I've kind of crudely.
Just grab the mic if you go anywhere, yeah, that's fine.
Taken Bob's map, and I just thought it would be helpful to give you an orientation of sorts, and, I don't know if it reads better this way. Perhaps it does. So I just wanted to give you an orientation as to where we are at relative to the cell tower. So at the bottom, you'd have the DW Highway, coming up Silver Drive, McDonald's would be on the right, the cell tower would be right here. Now, as you proceed up, literally up Silver Drive, you're coming into the Pheasant Run apartment complex. So right here, we have a tennis court where lots of kids play and ride their bikes. We have two, our two largest parking areas are right here. And then we begin our apartment buildings. One is here, one is here. We have a property management office and clubhouse here, properties here, in here. And then, as you can see, my little arrow, we have another, we have more buildings to the, to the left or to the west, if I'm using the top of the page as north. So all totaled, we have 341 apartments there at Pheasant Run. So this development will have a significant impact on us, and I'd like to talk about that with you. I think I really have four comments that address our concerns and our hope, in our opposition to this application tonight. I think they can be applied whether it's under site plan review or the consideration of the waivers, as I believe the standards are relatively the same. So the first item under the site plan review is, does this project promote aesthetically, is it aesthetically pleasing development? And as I said before, when you look at, when you look at the development and you're coming up Silver Drive, once you cross where this cell tower is going to be, the grade increases significantly. Our buildings are probably 50, 60 feet above in elevation from where this is. So if you take 130-foot cell tower at a 50-foot elevation, what happens is, you have a cell tower right in the middle of every living room that we have on our property. The applicant did mention the, this supposed buffer. There is a tree line there, right in this area, next to our tennis court. Yes, there are trees there. At present, we looked down on the top of those trees, we looked down on the top of the McDonald's building and out into the DW Highway. So those trees will provide zero buffer to our development as we stare at a cell tower in the middle of every living room window that we have. So I don't feel that that meets the criteria for site plan approval. As I said, the visual characteristics are significant to us. The fact that this is temporary in nature and it's only going to be 18 months, I agree with a prior presentation before the planning board, to the extent that you're a commercial owner at the Pheasant Lane Mall or along the DW Highway where people are running around in 30 minutes, it's no big deal. But for us, we have people living here year-round. We have to lease these apartments, we have to re-lease them, renew them, 341 apartments with a cell tower in your window. So the fact that it's temporary is not a comforting factor to us. For 18 months, we cannot predict how it's going to affect our rental status. I believe one of the board members, Ms. Harper, asked the question, are there health and safety impacts? And I think the statement probably was correct, that from the FAA, FTC standpoint, you know, from a wave standpoint, an electricity standpoint, perhaps there aren't any health impacts. But again, you have 130-foot pole that if it falls, it's taking out our tennis courts and our two primary parking areas and whoever's located in them. So I think there are true health hazards, maybe not from the waves given off by the cell tower, but from its ability or potential that it could fall and damage cars, people, you know, block off our parking area so that we're not able to lease those buildings. So these are significant factors to us. There was a reference to traffic impact and an installation period of 10 to 15 days in the, in the staff report. I don't know what that means relative to Silver Drive. If it's 10 to 15 days and it's entirely on-site, that's a different story than if we're starting to block off Silver Drive, which is our primary access point to our residents. 10 to 15 days is a big deal to us. So I guess that's really truly an unanswered question, whether this 10 to 15 days is purely located inside the parking area and obviously would be tolerable in that respect. It's to the extent it's going to interfere with Silver Drive that we would begin to have an issue. The last issue that I want to touch on, and I know Attorney Grill mentioned the same thing, I don't think either of us want to bore you with a lot of law tonight, but at the heart of all aspects of waiver and the approval process tonight is the issue of hardship. And they mentioned their hardship, they're being tossed out of the cell tower that exists at Costco, and I think everyone would agree, not a great thing, a tremendous business disadvantage for US Cellular. However, in the permitting context, hardship means there are special conditions related to the site that make it impractical for you to comply with the conditions that are required under the relative ordinances. And so nothing that's been presented tonight describes a hardship that's related to L. Silver Drive. Their hardship's a business hardship. It has nothing to do with L. Silver Drive. They have a business problem, and they need to find a solution. Their business hardship is not a permitting hardship. And because they're not meeting the hardship standard, because they're not meeting the standards of a aesthetically pleasing development, also under your criteria for approval would be, it's in harmony with the character of the neighborhood, it does not have a significant impact on surrounding uses, and the purpose will not have a significant health and safety impact. Again, all criteria for you to consider in site plan approval, I would say they haven't met these standards. I understand their business crisis, but I don't think it's a permitting crisis. And the impact upon us to have 130-foot antenna in the window of all of our tenants is going to create an economic hardship on us because those tenants are not going to want to stay there, nor we're going to be able to re-lease, re-lease the properties. And so we have a problem with this. We believe this is an impact significant enough that you should deny the application. I appreciate your time tonight. If anyone has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? I just have a question. Have you talked to your tenants about whether or not a gap in cellular coverage is a hardship to your tenants?
We have not discussed it with our tenants. We're hopeful this won't occur because I think they're going to be more concerned about the fact that they're staring at a cell tower in their living room window. So it's, plus at 341 apartments, you're talking about probably 500, 600, 700 tenants, families. So it's just somewhat impractical.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that question was-
There are, as I understand it, there are three other cellular providers in the area. So, and they all exist on the Crown Castle cell tower that's being dismantled. So they're all making accommodations that don't involve a cell tower parked in the middle of a residential apartment complex. So I don't understand how they're able to accommodate, yet US Cellular is not. I frankly don't know what they're doing, except I know they're not coming here before the board asking for a cell tower.
Just related to the chairman's question, have you heard, it doesn't sound like you've had any direct conversations with your tenants, but have you heard any concerns from your tenants about the proposed tower?
I don't think that they really know. We found out, the gentleman said that we met with the planning board, I believe about two weeks ago. We found out five days before that meeting that this application was there. So we really didn't have an opportunity to canvass our tenant population. All we know is that the mathematics are simple. If you're 50 to 60 feet up a hill and you have 130-foot tower, it's not hard to figure out where it's going to be located visually from your apartment front window. Thank you again.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? At this point, I'd give the applicant time to come forward and address some of the questions and concerns that are brought up by the public testimony here. Obviously, there's a visual question, there's a property impact question, and access to Silver Drive question. So if you could hit some of those up here.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Steve Grill on behalf of US Cellular. I'm an attorney. I think it's sort of a global response, was that all of these points were within the approval process before the zoning board, which led to the issuance of the variances and special exception. And I'll drill into those in just a minute, but it sounded to me like Attorney Brown was trying to relitigate the grant of those, of that relief by the zoning board, rather than address planning issues. So just for example, one of the variances was from the setback requirements. So my understanding was the purported safety concern of what happens if the tower falls was addressed and considered by the zoning board, and they made their decision as part of the balancing that they are required to do. And as Mr. Gashin, or maybe it was Mr. Cazara, said, this particular facility will be engineered to withstand extreme weather conditions, and he gave you the details on that. And we certainly can go over that with the city engineer if that has to be sort of looked at more deeply. But we're confident that the tower will not fall down in any weather that we are familiar with up here, and it can get pretty harsh. I can't remember any tower ever going up where people have said, we have to make it meet the aesthetics like 90% of the, or 99% of the projects that come before this board. We can't make it a colonial or, you know, a nice New England building. It's a tower. Towers are towers. So the idea that there is some kind of requirement that we satisfy the normal planning imperative of trying to make it aesthetically pleasing, I mean, there may be a couple of things we could do, I guess if this board wanted it painted a certain color. But we typically find that the gray color blends best against most backgrounds, and that's been borne out time and time again with all the towers that are now deployed throughout New England. But beyond some tweaks like that, it's a tower, and it's nothing we can do to make it something else. And for that reason, courts have pretty much universally said that general concerns about aesthetics, meaning people say, I can see it and I don't want to see it, really don't pass muster as a ground for objection under the federal regulatory regime that exists for these types of facilities. So I think, A, it was raised with the ZBA, which considered it and made its decision. And B, it's a general concern that could be raised about any tower, any time it's built, and that's just not enough to carry the day under well-settled law at this point. Traffic impacts, I think the only potential problem on Silver Drive will be the day they deliver the tower, because it's obviously, it's a large piece of equipment that has to maneuver up to the parking lot. But once it's there, all the work is being done in the parking lot and will not, you may correct me on that.
I am going to correct you. There will be zero impact to Silver Drive. The tower will arrive on a-
Make sure you state your name.
Oh, sorry, Ken Cazara, again. The tower will arrive on a flatbed truck, and based on the width of the parking lot, we can pull it right in there with a crane, take it off, put it together. Boom. And then the flatbed backs out and goes away.
Okay.
So, there you have that. And then I think the final point that I wanted to respond to was the hardship. And with all due respect to Attorney Brown, he's just mistaken for a couple of reasons. First of all, the special conditions of the site, which is not, it's kind of paraphrasing what the New Hampshire statute says with respect to zoning variances. It is true that hardship is used in the statute with respect to planning board waivers, but as the New Hampshire Office of Planning states in its information that it provides to planning boards, hardship in that context simply means unnecessary or unnecessarily burdensome. And the waivers we've asked for here are kind of obvious, that if we're not creating any additional impervious surfaces, we're asking that we not have to do any stormwater management and the like down the line. Any additional landscaping would be redundant. I know Attorney Brown said his, some of his tenants at least, it's hard to imagine every single one, but I guess that's what he said. But we'll concede that at least some of them will view the tower. That's going to be true whether we add additional bushes and, you know, even small trees at ground level. There already is a vegetative buffer, so that would be redundant and unnecessarily burdensome in that context. And again, the hardship does have a special meaning in any event when it comes to cell towers, because both under federal law and under New Hampshire law, the test is really, do you need this tower to avoid a significant gap in coverage? And you've heard from our witnesses that we absolutely do. It is true that there are other carriers being affected by the dismantling of the Costco Tower, but they have licenses in Massachusetts. So we believe, and I can't speak for other carriers, I don't have access to their information, but we believe their plan is to beef up existing sites immediately over the Nashua border. We can't do that at US Cellular, because we, unlike AT&amp;T and Verizon and T-Mobile, we are not licensed in Massachusetts. US Cellular is primarily a rural carrier, so it bases its licenses throughout New Hampshire, Vermont, and Maine, not in Massachusetts. So we don't have the luxury of deploying across the border the way some of our competitors can. So this really is our only option. Again, it's temporary. We think we've met the criteria for site plan approval, particularly bearing in mind the decisions that the zoning board has already made, which I respectfully would submit, limit the scope of this board's review, given that the setbacks have already been approved and so on. So unless there are any questions, that's it for me.
I have a question on the timing. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm missing it. I don't see in the zoning thing the 18 months. Maybe it was in the minutes or something. What do you think the timing can be?
Well, we know that from what Mr. Gashin said, that Costco will be dismantled sometime within the next several weeks. We're hoping later rather than sooner. And then, you know, obviously, we want no gap if possible, but maybe Ken, you can add to this, but as quickly as we could get a building permit and get everything up and running, it's, I mean, you have more insight into the details.
I guess my timing question is more towards between when does the temporary site go away?
Oh, okay. Oh, I can answer that. So we are currently working on several alternatives for permanent solutions. Crown Castle has suggested one to us. We're looking at another one ourselves. We're looking at several buildings. We asked for 18 months as worst-case scenario. We're thinking it's going to be somewhere between nine and 12 months, and then we'll be gone. We'll decommission everything, clean up anything in the parking lot that may need to be cleaned up, and we'll be out of here and onto our permanent site. But just in case something were to happen, we asked for 18 months, to be conservative.
Mr. Weber?
Just, Ken, did you guys look at the exit six, there's a second tower there? It's not going to, it's not being used right now. It's supposed to be removed, but-
We're on that tower.
Okay.
We are the only tenants still on that tower.
Okay. But there was, there's two there now.
Yes. Yeah, we're on the old tower.
Okay.
We have not relocated to the new one.
So you can't beef that one up to cover.
No, it's way too far away. Way too far away. Yeah, we've analyzed every single tower in the city. We're on almost all of them. I think the only one we're not on is the one on Ridge Road directly across from our residence. So I don't have good cellphone coverage at my house, but it is what it is.
Yeah, you answered my other question.
Would you be amenable to a shorter timeframe?
Unfortunately, you know, we'll get it done as soon as we can, but we're dependent on so many other factors, including anything that we do, you know, has to both follow the federal regulatory guidelines, which are not a simple thing, and obviously, any local permitting that's required, and leasing a new location. So that's why we asked for the worst case, and if we can get it done quicker. This site is of, we had to basically limit our technology as best we could to be able to make it smaller and get it in temporary, because this is kind of what we would do if there was a hurricane or something, we would deploy a similar facility as this. So we tried to still be able to meet our customer needs, but not have all the bells and whistles that we would deploy on a full site. So trust me, we want to get off this thing as soon as we can.
Other questions from the board? We do have, there's only one, so you don't need to get together with anybody else. We do have the opportunity for you to come back up and ask another question. So, and we can, we'll bring the applicant back up if we need to.
Again, Jeff Brown from Princeton Properties. I don't want to belabor the point. All I would say is, I'm not here tonight to revisit what happened at the zoning board. They have their own criteria for special permit. You have your own criteria for site plan approval. And looking at 190-246D, it couldn't be clearer, the site plan shall be in harmony with the character. The proposed use shall be able to coexist with the surrounding uses, and the proposed use shall not have a significant impact on the surrounding uses. The proposed use shall not have a significant health and safety impact on the surrounding properties. So while there may be similar requirements under the Board of Appeals, I'm not quite sure, I don't have that regulation in front of me, but it's clear these are your standards, and I just ask you to consider my opposition in the context of your standards. Thank you.
Thanks. Any further questions from the board for the applicant or for staff? I guess I have one for staff, just been here a while on the board, and I'm trying to think if we, when the last cell tower came up.
Actually, we did have one.
We had one recently, but I'm trying to remember if there was any precedent regarding the nature and character discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that question.
Let me hear from staff, please. We'll call you up if we want to.
Not exactly sure how many years ago, but 10 Whipple Street, the cell tower over at Mines Falls came in, and that got approved. We didn't actually have anybody come and speak against it. So it wasn't an issue, it was approved.
Okay. We're still have the hearing open, so I'll call the applicant up. If you do have input on that, I would like to hear about it, so.
Yeah, the last two cell towers approved were, as correct, the one at Whipple Street in Mines Falls Park, which is a monopole, and the one on Ridge Road across from my residence that is also a monopole. This is a monopole, however, different from that one, we have flush-mounted the antennas to make it a smaller view, because we took into account that, you know what, this wasn't here before. Some people are going to see it, so let's try and minimize it as best we can. Also, you know, we're currently at 140 feet on the Costco Tower, and we were like, well, you know what, we can probably live with a slightly shorter tower for a temporary period before we find our new location. So we cut it down to 130. So we considered it.
Thanks.
Yep.
I just wanted my presentation, again, Jeff Brown, Princeton Properties, to be taken in proper context. I'm here on behalf of Princeton Properties. I'm an attorney that represents Princeton within Massachusetts. I'm not a New Hampshire licensed attorney, and I'm not trying to debate Mr. Attorney Grill on the nuances of New Hampshire law. So I'm speaking on behalf of Princeton, and I'm just reading your ordinances. I'm not trying to draw any specific legal interpretation of the same, and I just want, in fairness to the board for them, to fully understand my presentation tonight.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further questions for the applicant or staff from the board? All right. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Go into the meeting here. So interested in people's thoughts, discussions here. Mr. Varley?
So, you know, I think the basic objection of the abutter is the appearance of the tower. I mean, I think that's ultimately what it comes down to. You know, I would just note that the particular criteria for the site plan approval that refers to aesthetics is not that the tower be aesthetically pleasing, but it says that the unique aesthetic, architectural, and visual character of nearby buildings or clustered buildings shall be maintained. And I would just suggest that we put the location of this tower sort of into the overall context. I appreciate that this is, you know, this apartment complex abuts Daniel Webster Highway, but this is the busiest commercial district in the city of Nashua. Their view currently, it sounds like, is of basically this retail strip of DW Highway. So I just, I think we need to put that into context. It's not, it's not like this is, you know, virgin forest that they're currently looking at where we're putting this tower. So I think putting that into context, you know, I'm not sure that there is a unique aesthetic to, you know, the view of the apartment complex right now that would be altered by the tower. And then I think, you know, in terms of the other criteria that the abutter mentioned, you know- abatter mentioned, you know, coexistence with surrounding uses, I, I mean, number one, I think, other than the, the aesthetics, the, the being able to see the tower, I mean, there's, there's nothing to suggest to me that, that the existence of the tower can't coexist with the other uses around it. It sounds like there will be minimal impact in terms of setting up the tower, and then minimal impact on a going-forward basis so long as the tower is there. And then finally, we've heard from the applicant that this is, you know, this is not the, the ideal site from their perspective. They intend this to be temporary, and while I appreciate that there, there may be some tenants who, you know, don't appreciate looking out their window and seeing a cell phone tower, I don't think that, that in and of itself, or the possibility that, you know, some of the tenants may not appreciate that view, and some of them may even decide not to rent in this particular apartment complex as a result. I don't think that in and of itself would be a, you know, a valid justification for denying this application.
Other folks? Mr. Weber?
As Ken was saying, there, we have approved other towers that were located right next to apartment complexes. It's already there. It's been there, and they built the complex next to the tower, and it's still there. And so, and they're not having any problems looking out their windows and seeing the tower, and it's not affecting their rental abilities. They're still renting more and more and more over on, off of Bridge Street, you know, at Rason, Ronson's, where the other tower is. So, that's my thoughts on that.
Other comments? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I would just add one other thing, because this was touched upon too, was, was the, the idea of hardship. And I think, you know, the attorney for the applicant, in my view, correctly noted that, you know, there is sort of, I think we were sort of conflating, you know, zoning and planning a little bit there, in that I don't think that the, the look, the use of this site in and of itself for the, for the cell tower requires a demonstration of hardship. I think, you know, what we're talking about is whether, you know, whether there's a sufficient demonstration to justify granting waivers from the application ordinance. In my view, I do think there is a justification for waiving, but, but, you know, even if we were to say that there's, that the applicant hasn't demonstrated hardship to justify the waivers, that still wouldn't, in my view, be a basis for denial of the plan. And at most, it would be a basis for denying a particular waiver, but there's still, you know, the, the applicant still has a valid basis, you know, under the ordinance for, for having the tower on this site so long as it otherwise meets the, the, the site plan approval criteria, so.
Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, with respect to the, the eighteen-month temporary location, if, if approved, I don't see that specifically as a stipulation anywhere in the staff report. Was that something we would need to add separately, or?
Well, it sounded like the applicant said it came from zoning. Planning can comment on that, maybe.
Yeah, I, I actually looked at the zoning approval letter. It's not listed in there, but what I did was I pulled up the zoning board minutes from November 12th, and it has in here that there was a motion made that, by Mr. Lionel, that eighteen months after final planning board approval, that all equipment shall be removed from the site and the site restored to the appearance as it is today.
That's a stipulation in the zoning approval?
It, it was part of the motion, however, it didn't make it to the zoning letter. So, if the planning board wants, they could just add that as a stipulation.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hirsch?
What happens if at the end of eighteen months, they decide that they don't want to remove this, or don't remove it for some reason? What, what, is there a mechanism to remove it or force them to remove it?
That'd be a question for staff.
I'm sorry.
If we put a stipulation that says that everything has to be removed by X date, and it's not, what, they're in violation of?
They're in violation of their site plan.
All right, so.
Yeah, and this, I guess, interesting related questions. I don't think, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you, if you recall any instance, but I, I don't ever recall approving a site plan with an expiration date. That would be unique, I think. I mean, I, and I don't know if staff has any comments as to whether they have any recollection of, of having done that.
No.
We do have a temporary provision for administrative approvals or minor site plan amendments, or, and that's typically, it's no more than 24 months, but in this case, it doesn't apply because it required a full site plan approval. So, yes, you, you can require it. It's going to be a temporary use. They, that's, the applicant has requested this. So, essentially, the site plan expires in eighteen months?
Yeah.
Yeah, I kind of see that more like, it's similar to like where we put out limits on hours and things, but it's, it's obviously long hours, but, but we have made, you know, so that people can only be open certain times, maybe.
Right, it's just, it's different in that, you know, that's a function of, of enforcing the terms of the site plan, whereas here, we're talking about basically the site plan approval would cease to exist.
Yeah.
So.
So, they'd have to repeat the process.
So, is there a mechanism?
I'm not sure. What's the mechanism of?
They'd have to go back to zoning board, and then they'd have to come back to the planning board.
Yeah, but the enforcement of that is essentially a city.
Yeah, we could simply enforce the conditions of approval, both zoning board and planning board.
Yeah. So, the city would, would be the enforcer, yeah.
Right. The city would be exposed to the expenses of enforcing it. And it just a.
Not sure how that would work.
Yeah, typically, yeah. We, we have a ticketing system now we can use, which is pretty efficient.
Yeah.
And there's a fine if every day it is not complied with, so that's a pretty, pretty big deterrent, and it's taken the district court for enforcement. So, it's a little less onerous process than Superior Court.
Yeah.
Which was old venue for something like this.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Other comments? Ms. Harper?
Just to play devil's advocate a little bit here.
Sure.
Regarding the aesthetics of that area, yes, it's very commercial, but I don't believe there are any buildings there of that height. So, that's pretty substantial. And second, just when we were talking about other apartment communities in the area that have similar structures nearby, the structures were already there when they were built. So, therefore, their rent structure can afford, you know, that type of structure. In this case, the apartment community is already there, and the structure is being built next to it, and it could affect the rent.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, I'm sort of thinking about, I mean, a lot of projects I work on have cranes that are about 100 feet tall, and they sit there for a year on a site. And, you know, is that similar? You know, that you're looking at a crane for a year, and then it goes away. Is it a similar scenario to that?
Well, in the city, that's normal.
Yeah. I mean, we, when they were building the mall, there was a crane there for, you know, multiple cranes there that were in that height for quite a long time, so. But it, I don't know if that's analogous, but it's sort of the first thing that came to my head is like, would, would I, as a, as an occupant next door constructions, right, with a crane for a year with a, here, something significant? I don't know. Mr. Peterson?
From a personal opinion.
Yeah.
From a marketing point of view, it's described that we have a housing shortage in Nashua. So, if someone looks at that temporary tower and decides, I don't want to be looking at it, and I won't rent here, I would think another person would come along and have no problem renting that apartment. That's my view. It's not a problem.
Okay. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I, I would just add, I mean, I think, you know, the, the abatter commented that, you know, while he appreciated the sort of commercial exigency for US Cellular in, you know, identifying a site, you know, that, that didn't necessarily justify, you know, putting the tower here. But I guess I would balance that, you know, ultimately, we're talking about too is, is sort of the commercial economic impact on, on the apartment unit. So, you know, ultimately, you know, will the landlord, you know, suffer economically as a result of the tower being there? So, I, I'm not sure that that, you know, it's fair to say, well, that outweighs the, you know, the commercial needs of, of US Cellular. Again, I mean, I, I do think it's, you know, considering the, the area, I appreciate several what you're saying, it's, you know, having the, the cell tower there is, is different in the sense of, you know, the height. There's not, no other buildings like that around. But it is, I, I do think it's different than if you, you know, stuck it in the middle of a, you know, residential neighborhood. And I do think that the temporary nature of the structure is, is meaningful too. I mean, yes, I understand that in the, you know, the apartment rental cycle, that eighteen months is, is not an insignificant amount of time. But still, it's not, it's not going to be a permanent fixture there. So, I guess that's, that's why, you know, I would, I would view the, the potential, you know, economic impact, you know, on, on the landlord as, as not in and of itself being sufficient to, to justify denial.
Other comments? Everybody? What about the timing? Eighteen months is, uh?
What do you, uh, site plan will be approved for eighteen months from date of approval?
Yeah, just, or site plan, site plan approval will expire.
Okay.
Eighteen months.
Is that the right wording, if we were to want to capture the timing in our?
Well, your site plan expires for this use on this parking lot. You already have a commercial parking lot on this site.
Right, for this use.
And they're putting a temporary use in the commercial parking lot. It's not Christmas trees, but it's, it's, it's a cell tower, but it's going to be there for a lot longer as a temporary use. And once that temporary use goes, it will revert back to the original site plan.
Okay.
So, you're approving a temporary use of that existing site plan to include this, this use for a temporary period, at which time it would revert back to.
Original.
Original commercial parking lot.
Okay. So, that's, but, but the eighteen months isn't really baked into anything here, right? That I can see.
It is in the zoning board motion.
It is in there, then?
It's in the minutes. But the way it was worded was that eighteen months after final planning board approval, all equipment shall be removed from the site and the site restored to the appearance it has today.
So, we could use the same.
Is that, same language?
Same language.
Same language.
Mr. Peterson? Suppose we just borrow the zoning board's words and put them into our stipulations?
Yeah.
It sounds pretty good.
It could, yeah. Okay. All right, any further discussion, or somebody want to make a motion?
No, you go ahead. You're already writing it down. You're fine. I was, but then, no.
We need a lawyer on this one.
Mr. Varley?
All right. I would make a motion to approve new business number four site plan, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan in our own section 190-146D. And that will have a total of 15 stipulations. The first six stipulations are all waiver requests and will all read is granted, and that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Seven through 14 to read as written in the staff report, and then an additional 15th stipulation to read substantially as follows, that eighteen months after the approval of this site plan, the cellular tower and associated equipment will be removed from the site and the site restored to substantially its original condition.
So, the, the only thing I might suggest is, there was a discussion about stipulation 13 not being applicable, I mean?
I, I would, I would just leave it in that, because it says if any road, any work is proposed, so if they're not doing any, yeah.
All right, so we have that motion to approve with those stipulations as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay.
I agree, Tom.
Yep.
Welcome to the planning board.
Okay, moving on. So, new business site plan, case number five, that's postponed to May 21st, 2020. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda determined proposals of regional impact. So, we have a new tentative agenda that was passed out. Anybody had a chance to take a look at it? Want to make a motion as to whether or not it's, are there any projects with potential regional impact? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact.
Okay, so you have a motion by Mr. Ballinger, there are no proposals of regional impact. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Next up on our other business, case number two, nomination for officers for the 2020 year. So, does anybody?
Time this evening.
Thank you. Does anybody have a, a list of nominations? Typically, we'll throw them out there, and, um, do we have to vote tonight? We don't vote until the?
Not until the end of the year.
Yeah, so this is just a nomination point right now. So, usually, just someone make a motion, and then we can have a discussion, and, you know, thing.
Yeah, I mean, typically, what we've done in the past is, one member sort of designates the, the unofficial nominations committee, and we'll send an email around and ask for nominations for the three officer positions, so.
Yeah. Yeah, does somebody want to take the lead on doing that? I mean?
I am really too busy.
Yeah. Usually, usually it's not one of the, the chair.
But not one of the current officers.
One of the current officers, so.
You just have to send them.
Just send an email and say, yeah, it's just sending an email and saying.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, we can, if anybody's interested in positions, you know, they can put it out there, you know?
Yeah.
Did we do anything else?
Is anyone not interested in their position?
Yeah, I mean, that's probably more important.
No, I'm serious.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, I'm, I'm fine continuing if anybody wants to nominate me. I don't know, Mr. Varley, what your thing is?
If you were happy to continue as the chair, I'd be happy to continue as the vice chair, but of course, if someone else.
Sure.
Like to step into the vice chair role, I'm.
I'll second that.
I think that was an emotion.
Didn't let him turn. You could nominate yourself as well. Is that?
No, that's true.
Is that permitted within our?
Oh, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, I think what we should do is make a motion maybe to sort of nominate one person to collect nominations and bring it up at the next meeting.
Mr. Ballinger volunteered.
Okay, so.
Just so I understand, without getting too deep into the weeds on, on the rules.
Yeah.
Does every, every regular board member make a nomination for chair, vice chair, and secretary? Are those effectively the three positions that were?
Typically what we do, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then, you know, you collect the results, if you will, and then bring it to the meeting, and then, you know, throw it out there, and we'll have a discussion about it, so.
You just talk with staff after, while you're doing this, just prior, prior to the?
Prior to sending stuff out?
No, no, prior to sending any emails out, just talk with Linda or Scott.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we can send that email around. That's not like.
They'll still discuss any cases.
Yeah.
Right, we just, yeah, I think, as alluding to the fact that we, we wouldn't want to be communicating via email about cases.
Right, this would be explicitly.
The officer nominations, that, that's.
Yeah, that's part of our dialogue. Okay, so, so I'm going to make a motion. We should make the motion that Mr. Ballinger is going to.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Varley, to nominate Mr. Ballinger to take the lead in collecting the nominations electronically. to nominate Mr. Ballinger to take the lead in collecting the nominations electronically and bringing them up at the next meeting. Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? That motion passes. We do have on the agenda to discussion item, the forty Groton.
Can we take a break before, I gotta go to the bathroom.
I give you two minutes.
Eighteen thirty seconds.
But if somebody's going to talk on, yeah. You can come on up and get ready anyway. Just give us a minute here.
This must be Mr. Forty Groton Road here.
That's not straight.
Oh, thank you.
Pretty much.
That's pretty detailed.
There's two single. They aren't a part of.
Oh, all right.
Oh. Someplace a bit.
It's easier to look at upside down than it is to.
No, no. North is up and immutable law of plans.
Look at, I know how to put them up.
All right, all right, all right.
It would be easier.
I was just giving you a hard time. It's up to you.
No nomination for you.
Got one more we need back here.
It is.
I can look on here, that's fine. We're just waiting for one more board member.
These guys might want one.
Yeah, we'll share it.
All right, you go, you can go ahead.
Good evening, folks. My name's Angus Bruce. I appreciate your time, so I won't take too much of it because you.
Yeah, can you just give your address too? Just.
Yes, I live at fifty-one Pond Street, Essex, Mass. This is a project that was originally called South Line Woods. It was thirty-four units. So, it was an approved subdivision plan that expired. It was under a PUD that you no longer have. It, it, it has most of the approvals that would be required today. I've been to the fire department, talked to them about it. I met with conservation. They've actually met me on site. It's a sixty-six unit project. It's in a forty R now. So, I would need a variance. I designed the project presently excluding the number of units under your conservation subdivision requirements. That would allow me fifty-one units plus with some of the extra things you could do, fifty-seven. I was, it's a very expensive site to develop because the original applicant added a lot of things that I think the town really wanted. So, that's why I'm looking to add a few more units, although I'm looking at all the options at the moment. What, what the original applicant had that, that people really want to keep, if you look at the plan, I made a change from the plan that you have.
Mike, Mike, take the mic with you.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. I made a, a minor change from the plan that you have and I moved the septic up to the rear, if you look at the plan that you have now. The original plan had parking down on Groton Road. To me, having a, it was a big parking lot. It was eleven spaces originally. What I thought was it kind of ruined Groton Road. You have this beautiful road and all of a sudden you have this big parking lot that people would have had to park in and then walk through the subdivision, which I saw having issues because I felt like, I've been up there quite a bit. One of the big things, people like to bring their dogs up there. So, aside from going fishing and there's a huge park that's in the abutting town that every, that's in Massachusetts, that everybody accesses through this property. And the idea is to keep that. So, my idea is, well, why have people walk by? Why not put the parking, have people drive through and park at the, on the line? So, you can see where I brought the parking up and I also brought the septic up. I thought that'd be less intrusive on the people that live there. It made a lot more sense. I also added, so I kept the same number of parking spaces. What I did is I cre, I created access to the park, which is really nice. And I also am expanding a walking trail that'll go through up off this access road. That's the second road. You don't see any houses on it. That's the second means of egress that was originally approved. The way I've set that up is something, you're building a new school up there, it looks like. What I wanted to do is design this so that it would have more extended use for school. So, I put bus parking there as well as regular parking because it's a beautiful walk. I took the, the conservation board, they took a walk up. I showed them where it was. And if you're not following what I'm looking at, just let me know and I'll point it out to you. But, so that I thought it'd have an educational value and kind of expand the original use because we're always looking for stuff for our kids to do. Get them outside, get them to understand that our, our natural surroundings are really important and they can walk into the park. So, it takes them along an area that's preserved in this forty-seven acres outside of the subdivision and gives access to the public and designed for kids. I originally had a breakaway gate. Talked to the fire department, they said no. They didn't want a breakaway gate. So, we do, we're going to do it with signs instead. You know, I was trying to separate the two, the sort of school area from the subdivision and so do not enter signs is how we do it. So, it would still be an emergency access, but people from the sort of public side wouldn't be entering the private side. I'm going to maintain the width of the road. Their concern is, is winter parking. So, their request was that I put up signs that said you can't park from November first or fifteenth to April fifteenth. So, there'll be no parking on the street or if it's November first to April first, but whatever the date is. And then I would add some parking, which I haven't done yet. So, I have more off-street parking for the people that live there. And they'd be able to park in the evening in the spots that are set out here at the top for proposed public parking, the six spaces. So, they'd have places for people to park off-street in the winter, so there wouldn't be any fire issues. Other than that, they like the plan. So, you know, I'm here just to get a general feeling. One of the things that I'm proposing, the, doing a lot of research on the town, there isn't anything that's smaller. Everything is six hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses. So, what I want to do is twelve hundred to seventeen hundred square foot houses. Make them more starter homes. Make them so that they'd be at a lower price for young people. There'll be two-bedroom units with an extra room or maybe just two bedrooms so that they would be set up for people's first home. Or maybe a couple might come in that don't have kids. It's not a fifty-five and older, so it's not going down that route. You have quite a few in town. It's really to give an opportunity for people to start in a house versus have to leave town because they can't find anything affordable. So, again, the part of the problem is a very expensive site. The thirty-four units just wasn't feasible. There's also seven hundred feet of water that has to be brought down Groton Road to access the site. So, I'm, you know, I'm trying to decide what's the best way to do this. You know, I was thinking individual lots. I think I would need a waiver if I do it under your conservation subdivision on the distance between units. Right now, I have twenty feet between units, which is your minimum requirement. I was kind of thinking if I did under your conservation subdivision rules, I would have four thousand square foot lots, which kind of forces the house to be small. But I want to do small anyway. I think there's a big demand. And that also goes to the number of units because you got to have something. If you're not going to build a big six hundred and fifty thousand square foot houses, you need more houses to offset the fact that you're, you're building smaller, more affordable ones. So, that's my general concept. It also connects walking trails around Groton Road, or I should say, they're not walking trails so much as sidewalks, but they're designed sort of like walking trails. So, it would tie those all together to bring you back to the Dunstable piece that's a large park with a big pond, a lot of people fishing. And I can say that because every time I'm up there, somebody's been going in with a fishing rod. So, I, I never see them come with any fish, but I do see them go in with a fishing rod. It's used a lot. So, the idea is that because it's used so much, it, it, I wanted to expand that use and also not make people feel like they were, they were sort of intruding on a subdivision. And that's the idea of moving the parking to the back so people drive through. When they get out of their car, they go right into the park. And over here, it's separated. So, if you bring a busload of kids or people just want to go, they're not interacting with the subdivision. And it doesn't end up being a big parking lot on Groton Road, which I don't see that. Groton Road is kind of a unique feel. And I don't want to change that. I don't want to, I mean, you're not really, you might see a couple of units from the street, but it's far enough back. So, right now, for you people that don't know the area, it's a pit. It's an active pit. So, it was originally a pit. It's been stripped down to as close as you get. There's really not anything in the way of trees because there's nothing for them to grow. It has huge piles, stockpiles of tar and rocks and topsoil. So, I don't see, and I don't have any really close neighbors. So, I, I only have one and so far he's, has been, you know, he doesn't seem to have any issues with it. He didn't come to anything I could find to the last meeting. I've reached out to him, but he hasn't got back to me yet. But I got the general feeling, it won't interfere in his business, which is, looks like a mill. So, I don't, he, he, he won't really see the houses and the people on this side are way far away. I see them maybe using it to access the park, although they can access the park as well, so they may not need to. So, I wanted it to sort of fit in. It's similar in concept to Groton Woods, which is up the street. More like when Groton Woods started. Now, what's happening in Groton Woods, they're building six hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses. And that's generally where most developers are going. They're shooting for the big dollar houses. I'm going for something, like I said, more affordable, but with volume. So, I just wanted to get your input. Obviously, this is preliminary. It's, would be if I stayed with, there's a lot of road in this. So, if I stayed with the original plan, most of the things were in the original plan would be approvable today. That's why I figured, you know, why start from scratch? It's already an existing plan, excluding the fact that there's more units. But the original plan, the horrific line, it was not, was not financially viable. So, I'm looking for any comments. If I go to zoning, I wanted to get, you know, yea, nay, or.
Sure. Are there any community amenities in this?
No, because.
Thoughts about any of them?
No, the amenity I'm seeing here is the park.
Okay, yeah, so you kind of got that built in. Would this end up being like condos because of the, the way it's, would these be private roads?
Well, there's two ways to do it. I mean, I've, I'm, right now, I'm sort of proposing condos.
Right.
If, I'm trying to balance the expense and the affordability, which I, which I'd like to keep it at. If I do it under your conservation subdivision, then I, then I guess I would make it a town road with small lots. It's a little unclear, reading the requirements exactly how you do it. At least, I haven't quite got that figured out yet, so I'll have to do a little bit more research on how you handle the units.
Right, okay. Mr. Barley?
Yeah. And this is sort of, maybe in part get to what you were just describing in terms of, you know, not being sure entirely whether you would be conserving subdivision or some alternative to that. But with respect to the, you know, the, well, in particular, this, there's the one, I guess, partially existing trail. And then you've got this proposed paved walking path. Is the expectation that that would be sort of within conservation easement? Or would there be a public access easement? How would that work?
It'd be a public access easement. Now, this whole, the original plan was all designed for public access. And that was, that was a big part of the approval. So, because it was a big part of the approval, that's why I've left the plan the way it is. Really, I'm completing, assuming I went forward, what was the original reason, if you read all the minutes, that the town wanted to approve it. They tied in the trails. I added to it by making it something that kids could use. I didn't see it being, I didn't see this portion, which is where the bus parking. I didn't see it being, I didn't see this portion, which is where the bus parking is, as being really publicly used as much as the other piece with the six parking spaces. And so I wanted to create some, and it's a beautiful walk. If you actually go through there, you go, you know, they've got beavers and they've got, believe it or not, wild cranberry bog in there. I mean, I've walked, I took the conservation people through it. It's got a beautiful pine forest in the back. So I'd take the path through there, and then it connects directly into the park without ever going into the subdivision. So it seemed to me like with just a little bit of extra work. And that extra path was in the original plan as well.
And in terms of the abutting properties in Dunstable, is the land trust, the conservation land, is that the only abutter in Dunstable?
Yeah, that's the only one.
That's, there's no other, other...
Correct.
Question?
Mr. Peterson?
Just for clarification, when I look at the drawing, I see these rectangular drawings. It says EDA. What are EDA?
It's a community septic.
It is a what?
That's a community septic system.
Oh.
So, you know, to meet the requirements and standard 10,000 gallons, what I've done is I've made all the units two bedrooms.
So what does that acronym stand for, EDA?
You know...
Affluent disposal area.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see that. Thanks.
Mr. Weber? Yes. What is your width of your road that you're proposing?
24 feet.
24 feet. So the fire department requests no on-street parking?
In the winter.
Just in the wintertime?
Yeah, they didn't have a problem with, it was sort of a double-edged sword. The, I talked to Sarah Marchand, and she said, "Listen, I want to have parking on the street wide enough so that we don't get calls if, saying..." Because a lot of the condos do 20 feet, and they have no parking. So when people park on the street, they have issues. So she said, "I want people, I want it wide enough so people can park on the street." And so I went to the fire department, and they said, "Well, that's great in the summer, but in the winter, we have an issue." So the compromise was they won't park there in the winter, and I will add parking, guest parking really, or if someone has, you know, someone who's living with, say, they have an extra car. Although, there should be plenty of parking for each unit as well. The way I've set this up is, right now, they all have garages, so, or space for a garage. Because I will design the houses so that they could be expanded a little bit later, to a minimum. Because again, if I did lots, it doesn't matter either way. They're going to be fairly close together, so there's not going to be a lot of room for people to develop the houses, make them larger.
And the circles on the, on 40 Groton, the circles are 30 feet roadways?
We, they sent us all the requirements for their fire trucks.
Right.
When I met with them, and that's been designed to handle all their requirements for the fire department.
Okay, and would you make sure that there would be no parking on the street in the circles so that the fire trucks can get around? Is that one of the requirements, or...
In the winter seemed to be the issue. Now, they may elaborate that in a little bit, but they didn't have a problem with the width.
Yeah.
They said, "Listen, if you're not going to ban it in the winter, then we want 28-foot wide roads." I said, "28-foot wide?" This is a really difficult site. That would make it unaffordable. So they're really, they said, "Well, you know, the compromise is, is we're fine in the summer. Just make some extra parking and make it enforceable with a, if it's a condo project, fine. If it's a town project, it's easy, then they just call up."
Yeah, I'm just saying at the circles, you might want to talk to the fire marshal and just go over that so that your tenants don't have problems down the road. Just talk with them about it.
Yeah, I met with him, and he was really helpful. So he sent everything to my engineer right away, so we have all the stuff that he wants.
Right, okay.
We have that up front. And the other thing that I like about the project too is if I put, it'll be, regardless of whether I end up doing it as a town road or doing it as a condo project, there'll be an association that will cover the septic. And the way I do that, which is a big plus, rather than trying to make, the original plan had lots of small septics. We might have to do two, but it had seven septics. It had pump systems. It had all kinds of stuff that I try to avoid, because they had seven pumps. To me, that's just asking for something to break. The way this will be, we're going to try to grabby-feed the whole thing. We might have to do one pump, and then have a condo fee or association fee that's designed to accumulate enough money over time so that if there's ever a problem, they have enough money. So they never run short of being able to fix it, because that's always an issue down the road. And the general maintenance, you know, ideally, I'd probably do it like Groton Woods, which is let people do their own, because I want to keep the cost down.
When you're said that you wanted to keep this price down for first-time buyers or, you know, within that, you might want to put, you might want to think about putting something that the owner has to occupy it, because you could have owners purchasing numerous ones of these because it's so low, and then renting it out for astronomical prices. So I don't know how you want, whatever you want to do. I'm just suggesting, you might want to have that stipulated in your condo things that owner occupied, not rentable.
Yeah, I'd have, I'm not too worried about that, because there's so many rentals now available. But it's certainly something I'd be willing to...
Well, we're, actually, we are, rentals are down. The quantity available is really down. Housing shortage is really, and by you coming in and putting these units in, it's so great, because housing is a big demand in this city and in the area because of the people, working people won't come if there's not housing like this. And this is absolutely great housing. Are there going to be basements?
Yes.
Will they be waterproof? In other words, no water can get into them?
Yeah, well, what we're going to, one of the reasons the site's expensive is because of that. Because they took this down to, I mean, they, it was a, that's a whole idea when they originally basically mined it. So we need 36,000 yards of fill to put basements in. So basically, all the fill that they hauled out, I'm going to haul a whole bunch of it back in. That's why making a 28-foot-wide road would be such a big deal. But, you know, I considered doing slabbing grade. What I didn't want to have happen is, I don't want to degrade the value of the houses either. You know, I wanted something that someone could buy, and they weren't just buying a cheap house.
Yeah.
You know, these aren't going to be workforce pricing. It's just that they're going to be affordable, and they'll be affordable in the fact that they're small. So, because no one's building small houses. Everyone's building, you know, 2,000 to 2,700 square-foot houses. And that's just not affordable, even to second-time buyers.
The parking spaces, will they, so you don't believe that the people that are going to be living here would mind public coming and parking down in those parking spaces?
They won't have a choice. That, these six spaces here and the ones over here, they'll, they are going to be for the public, designated for the public. And these people may, will probably be required under either an association fee or if it turns out to be a public road, still under an association fee to keep them clear. So that it doesn't become a burden to the town, and that's just going to be part of what it is. And the way I see this, I don't see it being that big an expense. And again, it's something they can use as well. I mean, these people will all, there'll be sidewalks.
Yeah.
So they can walk down and go into the park as well.
The 40 came, when 40 Groton came before us, they said that the conservation said that you couldn't have paved going where it continues from yours, going up to 40, and then going on to another one. Conservation said no paving.
This is 40, you mean 35?
I'm sorry, 35, thank you.
Yes, across the road.
Across the road, there's your new neighbors across the road. But they said that 35, the conservation said, had to be grass.
Well, I'm going by the original proposal. They didn't bring that up when I talked to them.
Yeah.
There's pavement there now.
Okay.
So if you walk out there, you'll hit a pave not too far in. That section's going to come up, but it's paved all the way to the line.
I love to pave myself.
The new one going in, I don't, they're not going to let me pave that one. That's the one over here where the bus is.
Yeah.
And there'll be a small section where I'd have to put a footbridge to get over the wet one. But they walked the whole thing, and they saw the value. I mean, it's really unusually nice. It's, you know, you would know it's standing from the street. And once you get through the brush, all of a sudden, it's pretty impressive. I think kids will like it. I know I would, I did. Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger?
You don't have to answer this. This is not site plan review. This is discussion. You're aware of the sidewalk requirement? Either construct or contribute a dollar amount in lieu of...
Yes.
Okay, very well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you know if the site, has it been tested throughout? Is there any hazardous anywhere?
There's no hazardous in. One of the things from the original plan
Yeah.
was there was no test pits
Yeah.
in the road. I don't know how you do that, but...
Right.
So I've gone and done test pits. The original location for the septic, we couldn't get any, we couldn't get anything that even close came to perkable. So that's how we came up with this location over here.
Yeah, we just have our famous asbestos piles everywhere, right, in the city? So just keep that in mind. We find those and, not that far from this area, actually. There's, they've been asbestos piles found in the ground.
The site that's active now is, Rock's Industries owns the property.
Right.
They don't, Jennings is the company that leases the land from them.
Yeah.
And he's, I mean, he keeps the site in really nice shape. Based on just walking around the site, I haven't seen any thing that would indicate they should be foolish enough or has found anything that was an issue. I mean, I talked to him.
Yeah.
He hadn't mentioned to me that he had, because I said, "Jeez, is there anything about this site?" And he goes, "Yeah, there's ledge over there."
Yeah. I think it's been primarily like buried asbestos pits, right? That's what we kind of run into in a lot of places, that people dumped it. I mean, there was a lot down the road and...
Well, we'll be cleaning the, we've got to clean it up anyway. So when the time comes, if we're in there, and God forbid, we find something.
Right, yeah.
We'll have to deal with it. But there isn't anything to the best of my knowledge.
Nothing, you know.
One more thing?
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, Roger?
Have you talked to the Dunstable Land Trust? It's not a park, it's a land trust.
It's a land trust.
And it's in a different state. There's nothing that prevents them to put a fence up the block, and then you don't have any preparation associated, exception for the Terrell Conservation Lands to the north and other side of the road. Or the access, the bike trail that you will connect down to Hadley Woods as part of the original plan, I believe?
Yes.
So that would at least allow your residents to ride their bikes down to the Nash River Trail?
Yeah.
And that goes to Pepperell or up?
Yeah, the, that was, you know, part of what I thought was the appeal of keeping the same plan.
Right.
Because there was a lot of effort that went into that. So all that's going to stay the same. I did, I did reach out to the Dunstable Land Trust about access and their general consent. They were familiar with the original plan, and they said, "We're, we have no issue with people using it or coming in, that's the whole purpose of it." Unless all of a sudden, they had some huge problem, which they haven't had now. I mean, if all of a sudden, kids were going in there. But I see that being less likely with the way it's here than it would be the way it is now. It's not happening now, so I'm going to guess it probably won't.
Good. Yeah. Another thing, earlier, 35 came up, and we had discussions about the crosswalk. Are you familiar with that crosswalk? Will there be a landing space? Bob Ballinger brought that up, and would you be having, on your side, would you have a landing place for that crosswalk?
Yes, because that was part of the original. It's actually up a little farther than my entrance. So the idea is I would connect the sidewalk up and connecting it, just like the original plan.
Okay. The other one, I had talked earlier today, that this might be having Dunstable come in because it's an impact. When we talk about impact, it, because of that, it does impact, we might at some point in time have an impact...
Like a regional...
Regional impact because of that.
Yeah.
When the time comes, we might want to make, yes?
The regional impact law in New Hampshire would not affect, but you don't send notice to Massachusetts, but you could send them a notice about the project.
Yes, that's what, that's my thought.
But it wouldn't be a regional back.
Oh, okay.
They're a direct abutter anyway, but...
Just being a butter.
They'd be notified under the abutter.
I don't think we're legally required to notify them, but we will. I mean, I think that's only, makes sense.
Yeah.
I agree.
We don't have any, too many projects that are on the state. Ones we have had have been with Hollis, and we've always notified them, but they're in the state of New Hampshire. It's kind of a strange fuzzy line here.
Yeah.
But the people that own the land trust are pretty good people.
The other, other thing that might want to be considered to have people come in would be NRPC, because they do GP, mapping?
GIS.
GIS mapping. So they might want to just be brought in, Sarah, or someone from NRPC, just to be in the conversation.
Any other comments for... Okay, thanks. We appreciate you.
Does it, in general, sound like a, if I go to zoning, because that's one of the things I have to consider?
Yeah.
You know, I may not, I want to be able to go and say, at least in concept, I'm in the right place with the plan, or didn't feel I was doing something that was egregious or...
No, I think in my opinion anyway, I don't know if it's consistent with a lot of you. I mean, the density concerns generally are abutter-related density concerns. And there's not really a butters. No, I mean, even the, you know, the ones across the street can't see it anyway, but... So usually, when we run into like a density issue, it's, you know, a set of single-family homes that are on 7,000 or 8,000 square-foot lots that are kind of abutting it, and they don't want to see the 4,000-foot lot behind their house, you know, or next to it.
Yes, density all around.
You wouldn't really have that scenario here, so...
But I think the plus here is you're getting rid of a pit. But I think the plus here is you're getting rid of a pit.
Well, that's.
Big trucks and, I know they can hear the equipment in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, that truck. So I don't, I only see it as a.
Big time plus.
Back into what it is, which is residential.
Oh.
I reckon for density is, you know, we're really, we're third density. Water's been brought in. The original R forty was based on septic and water.
Right.
If you eliminate the water.
Right.
You know, in concept, an R thirty.
Right.
One of the other things that I, what I was talking to thirty-five about is the, how the the trail goes on the street of paving, you know, goes on the street. Doesn't, you don't have a sidewalk. And so some signs would be good to show the continuation of the trail, this direction for the trail. Unless you wanted to put something down on the paving, but I think signs would be better to show trail this, you know, direction of the trail.
Yeah, I, you know, when I, that's a good idea. And we can decide when I come in, I'll come in with some options. But actually, probably ideally, putting it on the sidewalk sometimes is better. If it's coming from the street, if it goes all the way out. So I'll have to talk to how it's laid out now. But either one, I'm okay with.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion items? Anybody who want to make a motion to adjourn? So we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second?
No second.
No second needed, I guess.
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. That motion passes, so we're adjourned at ten fifty-two.